Good evening. I would like to call to order the West Covina Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, November 27, 2018. Let the record reflect, the time is 7:04. At this moment, we will start with our Pledge of Allegiance. Can you please rise? Our pledge this evening will be led by Commissioner Rosati. Welcome. And then that will be followed by a moment of silent prayer.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call.
Commissioner Holtz. Commissioner Redholtz.
Here.
Commissioner Hing. Commissioner Rosati.
Present.
And Chairman Jimenez.
Present. We have three. We do have a quorum this evening. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting of October 23, 2018. Are there any changes, adjustments? None? Okay. They stand as approved? Moving on to oral communication. This is the time when members of the public can come up and speak to the Planning Commission on items that are not agendized on this evening's docket. This time, we allow you folks to come up to speak, to state any other, or talk about any other topic, other than what's being discussed in the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment, feel free to step forward at this moment. Thank you. Let the record reflect. We have no oral communication. Moving on to public hearings. We're going to change the agenda a little bit. If you notice, we have a couple commissioners that are not present at the moment. A fourth commissioner will be joining us shortly, and because there's a lot of interest with, in this particular case, item number two, what we're going to do is take the agenda a little bit out of sequence to listen to a few other items, to allow that commissioner to join us. At this moment, what we would like to do, what the commission would like to do, is move up item number four. This is a conditional use permit 18-06 for 146 North Grand Avenue. Are we okay, commissioners? Do we need a, just a general vote? Do we need?
You don't need a motion. You can just direct us to do that.
Okay. So what we're going to do, folks, at the moment, is bump up item number four on your agenda. This is, again, a conditional use permit 18-06, a categorical exemption. The applicant's a Hanisha design for Kumon Learning Center. The property is located at 146 North Grand Avenue. The request, the project consists of an application for a CUP to allow for a tutoring center for children's of ages five to 18 years of age. The tutoring center will be located within an existing 952-square-foot tenant space. At this point, we will hear a staff report from staff.
Veronica Hernandez, our associate planner, will be presenting that.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the use of a tutoring and test preparation facility, Kumon Learning Center, located within an existing 952-square-foot tenant space in the Grand Creek Plaza Shopping Center. No new construction is proposed. The subject property is in the service commercial zone and located north of the ten freeway on the east side of Grand Avenue. The surrounding uses and zoning are included in your staff report as well as on screen. So here we have the site plan. The tenant space is going to be in the northeast corner of the shopping center. The applicant is requesting approval to operate an after-school tutoring center for youths five to 18 years of age. The center will be located within the existing tenant space. Kumon Learning Center is a franchise business, operating such facilities nationwide. And again, it's going to be up in that northeast corner here. Here's the layout. So there'll be tables for the students to come in. Move on to the operation. The applicant has indicated that the center will be open five days per week. Business hours will be Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There will be one full-time staff member, the owner, working at the center during business hours. The applicant has indicated the maximum number of adults on site at one time will be four employees, with a maximum of 35 students. Students ages five through 18 will attend the facility for an average session time of 45 minutes to work on math and reading worksheets to supplement their education. Student appointments will be held Monday through Friday from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The remaining hours will be spent on administrative operations, parent-teacher conferences, and other business needs. The applicant is proposing a maximum of four staff members and 35 students on site at any one time. This would result in a maximum parking requirement of eight spaces, depending on the ages of the students attending. Staff conducted a parking study and found that 174 spaces were required for the uses in the center. The center provides 196 parking spaces. Therefore, a surplus of 22 parking spaces exist. Through the conditional use permit, findings were made to determine that the proposed tutoring use would be suitable for the existing site and neighborhood. The findings concluded that the proposed tutoring use is consistent with the service commercial land use designation in the general plan, meet zoning code standards, and would not be detrimental to the health and safety of the adjacent land uses and residents. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit number 18-06. That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here if there are any questions.
Thank you for the presentation, Veronica. Any questions from the commission or staff? Okay. We have none. Okay. So we'll open this item for public testimony. The applicant, do you wish to step up and say a few words? Okay. You can just come up and state your name and address for the record, and maybe if you just can give us a quick background of the application.
Andrea, do you want my address? Yeah, it's 2860 Buckhaven Road. I live in Chino Hills. And as the staff report stated, you know, I'm proposing to open a franchise Kumon Learning Center. And as stated, there's many, these franchise locations exist nationwide, and they're there to supplement education through math and reading worksheets curriculum. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Redholtz, please.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, these are franchises. Do you operate any others, or will this be your first one?
No, this would be my first one.
Very first one. What is your background for this?
My background, I'm an industrial engineer, and I have my interest in the Kumon Learning Center. I have three children, and I've been a Kumon parent for 15 years. So this is a little bit of a career change for me at this time in my life, and I truly believe in the program, and I think it can be beneficial to many children.
Is there some type of training that they put you through as a franchise owner?
Yes. Actually, they did put me through the training, and I completed that just recently. So I'm just ready for the next stage now, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you for that. Let's go ahead and open this item for public comment. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay. Let the record reflect. No comments? Okay. I will close a public comment. Commissioner, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if staff has nothing to add, I would request we have the resolution numbers read.
This is a conditional use permit, so there's one resolution, which would be 18-5969.
Move to approve?
Second.
Go ahead.
Take your pick.
I'll take Ashley.
Welcome, Ashley.
Roll call. Okay. Roll call. Commissioner Redholtz.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosati.
Aye.
Chairman Jimenez.
Aye. Motion passes, I guess, 301. And this item is, this action is final on this appeal to the City Council within 10 days. Thank you, and best of luck. So Jeff, we'll just continue backwards with item that's agendized at the moment is item number three, will now become our number two.
Yes.
This is administrative use permit 18-07, as well as a subcommittee for design review 18-16, under sequoquy categorical exemption. The applicant is Jeremy Ye for 1117 South Lark Ellen Avenue. This is a request for an administrative use permit to construct a 4,001-square-foot two-story residence. The residence will consist of a 1,698-square-foot first-story addition, as well as a 1,575-square-foot second-story addition. That, my apologies, I'm fighting a code. The house will feature five bedrooms and six bathrooms. The proposal also includes a 57-square-foot balcony to the front of the house and a 278-square-foot balcony to the rear. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Veronica will be presenting that report as well.
Thank you.
I'm back again. So as stated, the applicant is requesting an administrative use permit to construct a new two-story house. The proposal also includes balconies to the front and rear of the house. The surrounding zoning and uses, as well as the environmental determination, are included in your staff report, as well as on screen. It's a residential area. It's all single-family residences. An existing 1,371-square-foot, single-story residence was built in 1953 and will be demolished as part of the proposal. So here's the site plan. The house is here. This is their backyard with pool and barbecue area. The applicant is requesting an administrative use permit to construct a new 4,001-square-foot two-story residence. It will include a 278-square-foot balcony to the rear of the house, a 57-square-foot balcony to the front of the house, a 97.5-square-foot porch, a 297-square-foot attached one-car garage, and a 431-square-foot attached two-car garage. The municipal code requires the approval of an administrative use permit for all new two-story houses. The subject property is located in an area with single-story residences and level topography. The first story will feature a master bedroom and bathroom, powder room, laundry room, foyer, great room, kitchen, and dining room. An exterior access half-bathroom is also included on the first floor for the pool. The second story will feature four bedrooms and four bathrooms. The house will feature a total of five bedrooms, five full bathrooms, and two half-bathrooms. The applicant is also proposing a 297-square-foot one-car garage to the south side of the house and a 431-square-foot two-car garage to the east side of the house, to comply with parking requirements for houses with five or more bedrooms. The applicant is proposing one 278-square-foot balcony off the family room to the rear of the house and a 57-square-foot balcony off the master bedroom to the front of the house. An AUP is required for balconies over 200 square feet in size. The subject property is 9,427 square feet in size. The maximum allowable unit size for under 20,000 square feet lots, for lots under 20,000 square feet, is 3,999 square feet. An administrative use permit is required for a maximum unit size exception when the proposed exceeds the maximum allowable unit size. Furthermore, a conditional use permit is required for a large home when the proposed exceeds the maximum allowable unit size by more than 25%. The proposed home would have a total floor area of 4,001 square feet, including the attached garages, and therefore requires an MUSC. Furthermore, the municipal code requires the approval of an AUP for additions exceeding 1,250 square feet in size. The proposed house will be 2,360 square feet larger than the existing house, and therefore an AUP for a large addition is needed. Staff review of the neighborhood surrounding the subject property found that the area consists of single-story, single-family houses that were constructed between 1949 and 1956. Staff conducted a survey of 16 homes surrounding the subject property. The houses in the survey are located on Lark Ellen Avenue, Avington Avenue, and Portner Street. They are all single-story houses with a mix of attached and detached garages. The chart in the staff report, as well as on the screen, shows the mean and median lot size, square footage of the homes, number of bedrooms, and floor area ratio of the surveyed homes. The mean is the average of all 16 homes, and the median is the number that falls directly in the middle, if listed in numerical order. The median size of the homes is 1,915 square feet. The house sizes range from 1,540 to 2,478 square feet. The lot sizes range from 8,406 square feet to 15,967 square feet. The lot size of the subject property, again, is 9,427 square feet. Floor area ratios range from 11% to 24%. The proposed floor area ratio of the subject property is 42%. The proposed house is a two-story house. All of the houses surveyed are single-story houses. As proposed, the house would be 1.8 times larger than the average size of the surrounding homes by 1,851 square feet. And while it will be 1.8 times larger than the average size, it would be 1.7 times larger than the largest house, which is 2,478 square feet. The house will be designed in a traditional style and feature a Dutch gable roof with concrete roof tiles and a light gray color, synthetic wood siding in a white color on all elevations, stack-stone veneer wainscoting, black decorative shutters, and wrought iron railings. The surrounding neighborhood is single-story and features mainly traditional homes typical of the mid-1950s style. They also feature a single-story ranch form. The proposed house will be consistent in architectural style with the existing houses in the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant has worked with staff to include alternative materials and decorative elements for a cohesive and aesthetically pleasing design. A Subcommittee for Design Review Board reviewed the proposal on October 9, 2018. The review board had no issues with the design of the proposed house and recommended it be forwarded to the Planning Commission based on the fact that this would be the first two-story house in the neighborhood. A discussion of Subcommittee guidelines is included in your staff report. The proposal complies with all Subcommittee for Design Review guidelines, except those related to second-story windows and balconies. The applicant is proposing a small 57-square-foot balcony to the front of the house, where privacy impacts are not a concern. The 278-square-foot balcony to the rear of the property will be located approximately 49 feet from the rear property line and approximately 113 feet from the house located to the rear of the property. There are also large windows proposed along the side of the house that I've highlighted here in close proximity to their neighbor. Staff recommends all non-egress windows on the north side of the house should be reduced to clear-story or non-openable frosted windows to reduce privacy impacts. Staff consulted with the building official and confirmed the applicant could either have one egress window along the north wall, should be right here, so they would have one egress window and then one smaller window, or they could enlarge the area between the master bedroom and the sitting area, which is this area right here, and then egress requirements would be met through the door leading to the front balcony. Staff is supportive of either of these options. Regarding the balconies, the applicant consulted with his neighbors, including both-side neighbors to the east and west, and the two properties to the rear of the house on Avington Avenue. So each house marked here with a star is one that the applicant consulted with. All the neighbors submitted a written acknowledgement of the proposal, indicating they had reviewed the plans and were in support of the two-story house, including the proposed balconies. Staff also sent out notices to the surrounding properties and didn't receive any comments or questions or concerns from any of the neighbors. However, based on the flat topography of the area and the close proximity to surrounding single-story neighbors, staff recommends that the applicant remove the rear balcony and reduce all north-facing windows to clear-story or non-openable frosted glass. So the front balcony doesn't present any privacy impacts here, but this balcony, we have concerns based on the flat topography and the single-story houses. So this balcony would be about here, and that's where staff's concern is. In conclusion, the applicant is requesting an administrative use permit to demolish an existing 1,371-square-foot, single-story house and construct a new 4,001-square-foot two-story, single-family residence, including a 297-square-foot one-car garage and 431-square-foot two-car garage. The applicant is also requesting approval of a balcony over 200 square feet in size. The house will include five bedrooms, five full bathrooms, and two half-bathrooms. The surrounding neighborhood consists of one-story homes. The proposed size of the homes is 1.8 times larger than the average size of the surrounding homes and 1.7 times larger than the largest house of the surveyed homes. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving administrative use permit number 18-07 and Subcommittee for Design Review number 18-16, with the condition that the rear-facing balcony be removed and that the north-facing windows be designed as clear-story or non-openable frosted windows. Staff has prepared a resolution of approval in accordance with this recommendation. The appropriate findings are included in your staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here if you have any questions for them.
Thank you for the thorough presentation, Veronica.
If I might, I want to follow up just a little bit. You know, these ones are sometimes our hardest ones, trying to figure out what, provide a recommendation. So one of the things that we have done here is that we've kind of devolved to the Subcommittee guidelines. So if they comply with the Subcommittee guidelines, then we generally have been recommending approval, even though there's, in this case, there's a large difference between the largest or the average-sized home and the proposed-sized home. But that's where staff's coming from. If they do the things that we're recommending, they will be complete compliance with the Subcommittee guidelines, because they designed the two-story to fit into the context with the horizontal articulation. So I just wanted to put that little information out there.
Thank you for that, Jeff. Any questions from the commission?
Just real quick. Yeah, did staff receive any communication in opposition to this at all?
No, we didn't receive anything, and there are letters attached in support of the design.
Yeah, I saw those. Yeah. Thank you.
I have a question. Would the proposed plan, is the pool also going to be removed, or will that also be kept?
I believe the pool is staying, but the applicant could speak to that better than I could.
Any additional questions from the commission? Okay. Let's invite the applicant. The applicant or representative here? If you may, please state your name and address for the record and provide us a little bit of background regarding your project, and we already have a question from Commissioner Rosati.
Hi, I'm Kevin Moranian, and this is my wife, Sheila Moranian. We're both owners at 1117 South Lark Ellen Avenue, West Covina 91791. Some background regarding our project, we've lived, I'm 42 years old, I've lived in West Covina for 15 years, so I've come to love the city. We have plans to be able to take care of our large family, as well as our family members who are getting up there in age, and we do have a large family, so we hope to be able to do that. At the same time, we've completed our education, nursing school, and things like that. We've grown to love the city, and we want to really just put our roots here, and this is our dream home that we feel that we can do that.
Thank you for that. Any questions from the commission? Okay. We're going to open this item for, oh, sorry, Commissioner Redholtz.
Yeah, thank you.
How long have you lived in the house?
Since 2003. We bought the home in 2002.
Okay. Okay. So it's quite a while there.
Yes.
I have a question. Is there a plan to reuse or donate any of the materials, like any doors or anything like that, windows?
Oh, I'm totally for that. If there is a program that has that, I'm willing and able to go ahead and do that.
Our planner and designer, he also has information regarding being able to reuse or recycle things that can be reused, so as to reduce waste.
And he is here today.
Yeah, I think that would be a good thing to incorporate.
Yes, I agree.
There's another question from Commissioner Redholtz.
Are you comfortable with staff's recommendation regarding the clear-story windows and the removal of the balcony?
For us, we actually, our position is that we are comfortable with that if we're provided reasons regarding
With those recommendations.
Meeting, meeting zoning ordinances.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
From what I understand, we've spoken to our architect, and we've met all the regulations and the codes that are proposed by the city, right? And then so, I just want to know, I just would like to know the reason why this.
As far as eliminating the rear balcony is concerned, our neighbor to the rear, he's voiced his support of the project, and he himself doesn't really, isn't really concerned about the privacy. I understand the position for the commission to have that as a concern. At the same time, we, you know, we would like to fully enjoy our property, and we would like to make sure that we have a legal reason or ordinance that indicates that we cannot have the balcony, and we'd be more than willing to comply with that.
Okay. Any additional questions from the commission? Okay. We're going to open this item up for public testimony. We may invite you afterwards to add some concluding remarks, and then we may deliberate a little bit. Thanks again for coming up. I do have three speaker cards on item number three, as originally proposed in the agenda. The first one is from Sheila de Jesus.
Hello.
Okay. And so, and Kevin, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I have someone else as well, Larry Martinez. And your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. My name's Larry Martinez. I live at 1109 Lark Ellen, which is right next to him, north of him. I've been knowing them since they moved in. I've been in West Covina since 1996. So I looked at the plans. I don't see a problem with the plans. I'm a civil servant, just like you guys. I've been with the post office 45 years. Long time, getting ready to retire as a postmaster. So I support the plans, but I was listening to the testimony of her position. I don't know what her position is, but about the rear balcony, those frosted windows, I do believe you're making them smaller or something to my side. I don't have a problem with whatever size they are, because it's a two-story building. They're like family to me, so as Kevin stated, if he has something legally that prevents him, I'm sure he'll comply, you know, to whatever the city says, and I just hope you approve their plans. That's it. Okay? Any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Okay. Let the record reflect. No additional speakers on this item. Commissioner, discussion? Any questions, comments?
Well, I'll take a stab at it. You know, from my seat, my position on this commission over the years has been to keep neighborhoods, establish neighborhoods, especially single-story neighborhoods that have been there for years and years, to not bring in a house that is massive or out of character with the neighborhood. That's kind of been my mantra on this commission. Having said that, there is no one in opposition here, which speaks volumes, if no one is here to say they're against it. On the other side, I am fully supportive of staff's recommendations regarding the windows and the balcony. The neighbors that are here now are here now to say they're in favor of it. However, down the line, there may be other neighbors that are concerned that there is the availability of this two-story house, whether it's these people or some future owner, being able to invade their privacy, and that is the reason for that concern I have. So I am willing to support this as presented, as long as the recommended conditions that staff has put forward are agreed to by the applicant. Otherwise, I will not support it.
Commissioner Redholtz, I do have to agree with you. As my time here with this commission, I've always said it time and time again, that our roles and duties require that we focus on the use of land. It's great when you have amazing neighbors, when you have neighbors that support you and are there for you. Unfortunately, that dynamic could change with the sale of a property, someone moving along, and then problems could arise. I think what staff does in these unique situations, they obviously analyze every single aspect of the development process, after looking at all the applicable codes. They have to interpret what could be potential impact or some of our wants, and probably the omission of the balcony is critical here, primarily because you don't have this character in the neighborhood. You don't have a two-story structure.
You don't have a two-story structure. And I guess, in essence, to get a pass for the two-story structure, we would like to take back the, the balcony, and I too am in full support of moving forward with the plans as proposed, but with the recommendation that staff has before this evening. Again, it's amazing that you have great neighbors, and I'm glad that relationship, and you can continue to coexist, but part of our duties here, as I've always said, is to focus on the use of the land, and this is the best attempt to get you what you need, but obviously being mindful of some of the requirements of the zoning code among others. So, that, that's really all I have to say. Any other commissioners wishing to add? Commissioner Rosati?
So if I understand correctly, the staff recommendation is to completely eliminate the balcony, the rear balcony?
That is correct, yes.
Is there, is there any conditions in which maybe they can just make it smaller?
Well, perhaps, let, let me, let me start from the beginning. The, the, the subcommittee is, is a, is a portion of the planning commission, and over the years, about, I don't know, 12, 15-years, the subcommittee's been in existence, the subcommittee, with the, the planning commission's blessing, has established guidelines. And so the guidelines are in the staff report, and Veronica covered them briefly, but let me read one of the guidelines. New two-story additions can result in privacy impacts to neighboring properties. Consider designing the second story to reduce or eliminate the need for windows on the side elevations. High windows that allow light in but restrict views onto neighboring properties may also reduce privacy impact. So that's why we're recommending, this isn't something that staff looked at and came up with based on what was proposed, it's the subcommittee guidelines, which were reviewed and adopted by the planning commission. Secondarily, in an area that is predominantly one-story, the addition of a second-story balcony, especially in a flatland neighborhood, can have an effect on privacy. In these areas, balconies and rear yards are discouraged. So those, those are the two that we're talking about. It's clearly written, we provided them when the architect first came in, and suggested that, and suggested that they not design those. So, they, they chose to design it and sort of take the risk that the planning commission would, would decide differently. This guideline, so the planning commission can make a decision that, in this case, it's okay. There's nothing wrong with doing that. But, on the other hand, that's what the subcommittee guidelines call for. And then, lastly, it should be noted that, you know, sometimes there's some discussion, you know, about code, and it meets code, so it should be approved. Well, if it's administrative, it's, if it's coming before the planning commission, there's a reason why it's coming before the planning commission. It's not to review the code, that's what, that's what staff does. It, it's to make findings that allow it to be approved. And so the administrative use permit has findings. One of the findings is, "The design of this structure has given consideration to the privacy of surrounding properties through the usage and placement of windows and doors, cantilevers, decks, balconies, minimal retaining walls, trees, and other buffering landscaping materials." So again, that's a finding, the, the planning commission, in their purview, has the ability to make whichever decision they would like to. We would have to modify that finding to state an affirmative that you don't believe that this is going to happen in this case. But that is a finding that has to be made. So those are, those are from the, that is, the subcommittee guidelines aren't in the code, they're adopted by the planning commission as a resolution, but those are in the code. And that, that is a code requirement, that this, this commission must make that finding, either affirmatively, which would mean that they'd have to remove the balcony and the rear yard, or negatively, and which means you would basically say it's okay to have it. So, long story short, the planning commission has the discretion to make those decisions, but I wanted you to understand why staff is coming from the point that we're coming from.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from the commission? Okay. I think a motion's in order at this point.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and, do we need to read numbers, or?
I can give you a number if you'd like. The, it's an administrative use permit, so it's one resolution, which would be 18-5970.
And that includes the conditions as discussed for the balcony and the windows?
The recommendation that staff gave, the, the resolutions prepared, is, is to remove the balcony and to change the windows, to reduce the number of, to, to make windows clear-story if possible.
Okay, that is, that is my motion.
We have a first? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Redd Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosati?
Aye.
Chairman, a minute.
Yes, aye. This action is final, unless appealed to the city council within 10-days. Thank you and best of luck.
Sure. Commissioner?
Yeah, I'd just like to apologize to the public. I was on a flight that was delayed for three-hours, otherwise I'd have been here, so my apologies for being late.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Holtz, but you're here nonetheless. Thank you for joining us. So working backwards, we're now going on the agenda, is item number two. This is a precise plan, 16-08, it's a conditional use permit also, 16-15, including also an administrative use permit, number 1803, a tree removal permit, 18-10, and a class 32 infill exemption under CEQA. The applicant is Leah Lombardi for Chick-fil-A. The property address is 200 South Vincent Avenue. The project consists of a request for the approval of a precise plan to demolish an existing restaurant building and construct a fast-food restaurant with drive-through. The project also requires the approval of a conditional use permit for the drive-through, an administrative use permit to allow outdoor dining, and a tree removal permit to remove trees along Vincent Avenue. The proposed fast-food restaurant will measure 4,214 square-feet. Staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes, thank you. This is a precise plan, conditional use permit and administrative use permit, tree removal permit. The proposed development requires the following entitlements: precise plan for the site plan and layout, and architecture, a conditional use permit for the drive-through use, an administrative use permit for outdoor seating, and a tree removal permit to remove five palm trees on Vincent Avenue. The subject property is located on the southwest, southeast corner of Vincent Avenue and Plaza Lake Drive. It's in, at the site of the former Elephant Bar Restaurant, and it's adjacent to the Colony Apartment Complex that was constructed about five-years ago. Titlement applications were submitted on November 22nd, 2016. The planning commission held a public hearing on the general plan and downtown plan on that same day. The city council held a public hearing for the general plan and downtown plan on December 20th, 2016. The general plan, the downtown plan review started in August of 2014, and was adopted by the city council, as I said, on December 20th. The recommendation tonight is to continue the item with direction to redesign the proposed project to eliminate the drive-through. The proposal is to demolish the existing 7,375-square-foot restaurant building that was Elephant Bar, and to construct a 4,214-square-foot fast-food restaurant with a drive-through. The lot size is 77,000 square-feet, almost 78,000 square-feet, and includes the property where Elephant Bar was, as well as the property where the bank building is to the south. It's all, it's actually all one property. The lot would generally be divided between the north and south portion of the lot by the drive-through lanes, and that's, it's divided by improvements, not by, by, by lot lines. This is the, the proposed site plan, and I'll try to point out some things. So it's a new fast-food building at the northwest corner of the lot, so here. Existing bank buildings on the southwest corner, and you can see that here. The drive-through lane would circle on the east side of the building, so it would come through, generally you're probably going to come through like this, the drive-through window is here, and then exit like this. Vehicle access, there's vehicle access at two points, one in the north and one at the south, and is, if you recall that site, there are currently three access points. So they'd be eliminating an access point here, and then removing this, I believe, a little bit to the east, and then this one, I think, stays in the same location. So you end up with two, two access points. Proposing two new trash enclosures, one would be here for the fast-food restaurant, and one would be here for the bank building. This is a three-dimensional view of the site, looking from basically the north, northeast, so it's the backside of the building. This is Lake's Drive, Vincent would be here, Walnut Creek here. This is where the bank building i- is currently. So I, I wanted to provide this perspective, because there's some other improvements that, that I wanted to make sure were pointed out. There's, there's this thing here that they call an order point canopy, which would have the menu board under it, and I'll cover that a little bit later, its design, but that's where it's located, at the end of that dual drive-through, where it goes from a dual to a single. The drive, there's a drive-through canopy proposed on the building, and then there is, then the drive-through design, you can see that it come in here, and you would exit out here. Vehicles that were parking would come in here, and then exit out here, and vehicles coming in to queue would come this way, or some, a few might come this way. Terms of the elevations, the proposal is for predominantly brick veneer building with some white stucco exposed areas. There's parapet coping and aluminum awnings, and they would be dark bronze. What I mean by that is this area here, and along here, plus the, these, these fixtures. Rod-supported awnings, that's what these are here, you can see the rods, and then an aluminum trellis on the front elevation, so that's what this is, aluminum trellis, it's on, on This is to give you an idea of the elevations in general. The north elevation, which would face onto Plaza, or Lake's Drive. This is the west elevation that would face onto Vincent. This is the south elevation, it would basically be facing the bank building, and this is the east elevation where the drive-through window would be proposed. This is the order points canopy that I discussed before. You can see it's kind of got an arch design, and these are the, the menu boards, and people would stack queue that direction. They're proposing them with fabric canopy, a fabric canopy to cover the order board and order point, and the covers are a dual drive-through lane, so it's, it's, it's side-by-side drive-through lanes to that point. On the front elevation, they, they are proposing an entry arbor and trellis walkway, and this is kind of, again, a bird's-eye view to help you understand that. This is the west elevation, so this is the west elevation, this is the north elevation, this is Vincent, there's a bus stop in this location. The arbor provides entry from the sidewalk, so the doors are here and here. There are no doors on the south or the west elevation, so generally patrons who are parking are either going to come through this way, or they're going to come through this way. And, and so that's one of the reasons for the trellis. Terms of parking, I'm not going to go through this in detail, but there's parking required for the fast-food restaurant, there's parking required for the outdoor seating, and there's parking required for the bank, and you can see the, the required parking and the multipliers to get there. There are 71 spaces required by the municipal code, and they're proposing 97 spaces, so they have excess parking spaces. They're proposing 11 compact spaces. They're allowed up to 35% in excess of the first 20. They're proposing 14 allowed spaces as compact. And perhaps, perhaps I should have covered that. I'm going to go back, and I'll catch back up, but just so you understand, but those are basically here, I forget the exact number, I think there's four on one side, maybe four on the other. So they're basically in this area, and they're, they're not all grouped together, they're kind of in, in two different groups. They're proposing a tree removal permit. They're proposing to remove five large palm trees from the corner of Vincent and Lakes, one is a king palm, and four are Mexican fan palms. Trees are up to 55-feet, they're not all 55-feet, but they're of a variety of heights, and you can see them here, the, the trees, that they'd be proposing to remove. The applicant did redesign the project in an attempt to fit better into the downtown-area concept, and I did want to, I don't have a pre, a before and after, but I do want to cover some of the things that they did, and they may, they want, may want to embellish on some of those. The building was relocated toward Vincent Avenue as close as possible to comply with the RC zoning standard. So if you recall, the downtown plan basically suggests the building be up close to the street with not big setbacks like you'd expect in a suburban location, but more like an urban like we, like the colonies is built. And so they, they were, they moved up as far as they could to still comply with the setbacks. An outdoor patio was added at the corner of Vincent and Lakes, they didn't, they didn't propose an outdoor patio when they first came in. And the trellis was added on Vincent Avenue to provide the covered walkway and provide some kind of shade and, and architectural feature along that elevation. They proposed an entry arbor from the Vincent Avenue frontage, which is an arbor, an arch, that people would walk under as they came in from the sidewalk on Vincent into the patio area. They did propose some additional windows in the dining area, and they added the brick facade to the exterior of the building. And not only added it, but it's the primary feature on that exterior. The drive-through use requires the approval of a conditional use permit. Proposed hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. The drive-through has a dual lane that separates the north and the south sections of the property. Stacking in the drive-through lanes allows up to 19 vehicles to queue. The queuing of more than 19 vehicles then would affect the circulation in the parking area, and the queuing of more than 27 vehicles interferes with circulation on Lake's Drive. So just to be clear, what I'm saying there, this is, this is the dual drive-through, this is the window here, so about 19 cars can stack to this point. After that point, now cars that are going through here are going to have a difficult time going in and around vehicles that are queued, and when you, when you go past that, they're probably going to stack this way, which means cars that are entering and exiting through here are going to have trouble moving about in that parking area. Once you get past this point, now there's cars that are stacking in the street, and you're causing potential accidents on, on the public right-of-way. Oops. So I think I've covered the drive-through use. So that, that's, just again, I've covered this, but this is the drive-through, the drive-through windows here, the order points here, and cars would, would exit this way, or perhaps exit that way into Walnut Creek. The queuing study was submitted by the applicant, it was done by an engineering firm. They analyzed four Chick-fil-A sites, Upland, Corona, Laguna Hills, and Rancho Cucamonga. The maximum vehicle queues observed are as follows. Upland was 26, Corona was 16, Laguna Hills was 17, and Rancho Cucamonga was 19. The analysis at the 85th percentile was that the average queue length is 15 vehicles. At the 100th percentile, it's 26. So I, I think, if I'm, I'm no mathematician, but I think doing that backwards, 1% of the time, it's 26 vehicles. Now, in the code, we have drive-through uses, there are two sections of standards that we review, and there's ideas that a drive-through should comply with at least one of these standards, in both, in both segments. So this is the drive-through use of adequate separation, that, that's what's discussed, and I'll cover this. Now, I, I do want to say that, you know, I don't, I think I can say this with a straight face, I don't ever remember reviewing a drive-through that was next to a multi-story building. So these, these adequate space standards were not really, I don't think, foreseen when they adopted these in '77, or whenever they did. They were more thinking of one-story and two-story buildings, I think, rather than five-story and seven-story buildings. So just keep that in mind. But they do comply with two of the three, and the reason these are highlighted or bolded is those two, they do comply with. So the number one is the minimum distance of 50-feet between the property lines and the outside of the drive-through lane, so they, they comply with that. And secondarily, minimum 10-foot-wide landscape buffer and/or minimum 6-foot-high noise wall along the property line, and they do have that, both, I think they have both, the 10-foot-wide and the, the 6-foot-high noise wall. Three, they don't, there's no, there's no unusual topographic conditions. So they do comply with the separation standards. Drive-through use noise levels, there's more, there's eight here, but we think they comply with five of them in our analysis. All deliveries in exterior building and landscape maintenance and cleaning activities may be limited as necessary, so there's a, there's a, there's a, they, they propose a limitation on hours of operation, there are, we can put standards on when deliveries occur and that sort of thing. Hours of operation may be limited, they have proposed a limitation on that. A noise study was submitted, that it wouldn't increase ambient noise levels by 5 decibels, and that the speaker box is oriented away from residential uses, it's oriented perpendicular to them, so that is not, it, it fits that description. And then lastly, it's the same standard before, minimum 10-foot landscape buffer and a minimum 6-foot high wall. So those, those five, they're in compliance with. Outdoor seating, the proposal is for a 1,300-square-foot patio area. You can see that here. Nine tables are indicated, each with its own umbrella, and there's four seats per table for 36 total seats, and that was covered in the parking standards. Entry doors to the fa, you can see the entry door here of- Entry doors to the fact, you can see the entry door here. Can't remember where the other one is. It's along this curtain wall. And then the other thing I did want to point out, this is that arbor feature that allows for entry from the sidewalk into the establishment. Concerning the sequel analysis, that was completed by a city-selected consultant, Taha. We do have a representative from Taha as well as a representative from K O A who did our traffic study. To evaluate the proposed, the proposals, studies were completed to determine if any mitigations were necessary, including a traffic impact study, air quality study, and a noise and vibration study. Based on those studies, mitigations were not required. The proposed development therefore qualifies for what's called a Class 32 categorical exemption. We've never used that here before. This is the first time. It's a categorical exemption, but it does require a study. And as you recall, when you got your packets, there was a study. And it's very similar to a, the way the study, it's very similar to some of the way that a negative declaration is set up, but it's a much shorter analysis, but it includes those, those studies that I just referred to. And they're provided as attachment seven in the staff report. So as we come to the conclusion, I want to take a few minutes to discuss staff concerns. First, first of all, I want to, to make it clear that staff doesn't review business operators. It wasn't our, our thought to review the business operators. And I also want to say that you couldn't ask for a better group of people that were representing this company. They were professional. Their demeanor was, was always excellent. I would welcome working with them at any time in the future. They, they, I, I really do feel that they did a really good job in representing their clients. The applicant, so, but staff concerns, these are staff concerns. The applicant submitted their application on November 22nd, 2016 at the conclusion of a two-and-a-half-year general plan and downtown consideration. The E I R for the general plan was released on September 13th, 2016, as well as the documents themselves, establishing a planning commission hearing on November 22nd and a city council hearing on December 20th. So that was known on September 13th of 2016. Based on six study sessions by the planning commission and one by the city council, the downtown plan was prepared for the final review and did not allow drive-through restaurants in the downtown area. Now, as you all know, at the end, at the, at the council hearing date, that was changed about a month after they submitted. But at the time that we weren't aware that was going to happen. The applicant contacted staff and staff explained the issue with drive-through uses. Subsequently, the applicant made the determination to file the application anyway. The application was filed one day prior to the requirement to comply with the downtown plan. Staff was clear from the beginning that there was a concern for the introduction of a drive-through at the subject property. And we included those comments in all the correction letters that we sent to them. This, this is a summation of what was in those correction letters. The intersection of Vincent Avenue and Lakes Plaza Drive is one of the busiest intersections in the city. The lot where Elephant Bar and the bank are located is a fairly small lot with three drive-access points onto roadways. The majority of the traffic to that site utilizes Lakes Drive. Due to the amount of traffic currently and the traffic generation of a Chick-fil-A with a drive-through, it is not an ideal lake, location for such a use. In addition, the city began preparing a general plan in mid-2014, which was ultimately adopted on December 20th, 2016. The vision in the general plan is for the area to become more urban, a balanced mix of uses, not just high density and walkable. The goal is to accommodate intensities and patterns of development that can support multiple modes of transportation, including public transit and walking. Linked places used for living, shopping, and recreating, thereby reducing vehicle trips and relieving traffic congestion. The intersection of Vincent and Lakes is the connection point between the Glendora-Vincent Triangle and Plaza West Covina. A drive-through of that subject site is not conducive to pedestrian movement and would have the potential to cause major traffic issues in the area. So staff has three general categories of concerns that I want to cover as we conclude. First, it's vision and design. The vision for the city and the design for the, the city seeking. In August of 2012, so not 2016, August of 2012, the city council adopted the mixed-use overlay zone that included a purpose section that stated the following. Standards in the mixed-use overlays area are, standards in the mixed-overlay zone are intended to reduce reliance on the automobile, create pedestrian-oriented environments, and support social interaction by allowing residents to work or shop within walking distance to where they live. And standards in the mixed-use overlay zone are intended to favor residential development that allows for a lifestyle that requires limited use of an automobile, creates pedestrian-oriented environments, and supports social interaction by allowing residents to work or shop within walking distance to where they live. Based it on, based on that stated purpose, the mixed-use overlay was adopted and the colony at the Lakes complex was completed based on that zoning standard. Since that time, there is frequent pedestrian, more frequent pedestrian activity with people crossing Vincent from, from the Plaza to Glendora Avenue or vice versa. Secondly, economic concerns. The drive-through use might have a detrimental effect on attracting destination and set-down restaurant uses in the area, which would be ideal for what the city's vision for the future for that area is. Vincent Avenue from the freeway to West Covina Parkway is a major access point for Plaza West Covina and Glendora Avenue. Currently along that frontage, there are five drive-through uses and a car wash. That's currently without this proposed drive-through. These type of uses are not destination uses. They increase traffic and may discourage other ideal uses and pedestrian visitors from visiting nearby uses. Lastly, the city has received interest from restaurants at the subject property that would be consistent with the vision for the downtown area. Lastly, traffic. Vincent Avenue and Plaza Lakes intersections is the most congested intersection in the downtown and one of the most congested intersections in the city. On-site circulation is difficult as vehicles leaving the parking lot may conflict with cars entering and queuing in the drive-through lanes. The highest trip generation measured at the Rancho Cucamonga Chick-fil-A was 382 vehicles per hour on Thursday, August 23rd, 2018, from 4:45 to 5:45. 382 vehicles equates to one car entering or exiting every nine seconds. This amount of vehicle traffic accessing the subject property will present a discouragement for pedestrians traveling between Glendora Avenue, primarily from Colony, and Plaza West Covina, as well as for vehicle traffic on Lakes Drive and surrounding intersections. Vehicle congestion will increase with the addition of a drive-through, magnifying the concern of potential traffic and pedestrian impacts at that major intersection. We did identify several policies and actions in the general plan that, that we don't think are in compliance. I'm not going to go through each one of those individually. I can if the planning commission desires me to do that, but they're in the staff report and you can see them on the screen before you. Chick-fil-A has established company values that have resulted in their business being closed on Sundays. This type of philosophy is unusual among for-profit businesses in that it leads like, it likely leads to lower profits. And I think we can all appreciate the reasons they, they might do that. Chick-fil-A has therefore established a value that it is more important to be closed on Sunday than to maximize profits. Just as companies can make decisions on values, cities set priorities to achieve goals that they have established. In West Covina's case, the city adopted a mixed-use overlay in 2012 and then a general plan with a downtown plan in 2016, which placed an emphasis on urban development, pedestrian-oriented environments. While Chick-fil-A submitted prior to the actual approval of the downtown plan, the mixed-use overlay zone was in place at the time of the submittal. And the city had been having ongoing discussion in community meetings for the general plan for well over a year prior to that submittal. Staff informed Chick-fil-A beginning at the very first contact that a drive-through use was not ideal for the area. So in conclusion, the applicant, the application was submitted on the last day, allowed for the previous zoning, which is the RC zone, and is in compliance with those standards. The site is in an area included in the mixed-use overlay zone, an area that was, has been designated for transformative development since 2012. Just so you understand, the downtown plan, well, the, when the downtown plan was adopted, the mixed-use overlay was, was removed. So it's no longer in place, but it was in place from 2012 to 2016. The site was previously occupied by a sit-down restaurant with patrons that it had about an hour turnover. The subject property is not a desirable location for a drive-through use as it is located between Glendora Avenue and Plaza West Covina. The proposed use does not fit into the vision for future land uses in the area and will interfere with the orderly development and the furthering of that vision. So staff is recommending continuance to redesign to eliminate the drive-through. There are other options that are available to the planning commission. One would be to deny the request to precise plan, conditional use permit, administrative use permit, and tree removal permit. And then secondly, approve the, if they, if the planning commission desires to approve the precise plan, conditional use permit, administrative use permit, tree removal permit, the planning commission can continue this to the December 11th date to allow staff to prepare resolutions of approval based on findings that are discussed at the planning commission tonight. And the conditions of approval have already been prepared. We've been preparing them since they first submitted and those are provided for you tonight in attachment six. Staff did receive several letters of support and some in opposition. Some of those were attached to your staff reports as attachment seven. Others were distributed to you tonight. That concludes staff's presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner questions? Commissioner Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you. Just for clarification, staff's recommendation of continuance has the specificity that it be for the redesign to eliminate the drive-through and that's it. Am I correct?
That is correct. We'd be okay with a restaurant at that location. We're just concerned with the fa, with the drive-through.
Okay. So if, and we don't know, but if, if the applicant were to say, yeah, we're fine with that, then the assumption that we would make is that that is their intent to come back without a drive-through. Can we make that assumption? If they were to accept?
Yes, if that, if they agreed to that, correct.
Okay. And, and I know that they've been working with you for a long time with different iterations. And at each point, they were made aware, based on the, these letters and the portions we've seen, that they were informed that there was a strong concern about the drive-through option.
That's correct.
And they chose to go forward, obviously, with?
They continued to work with us, yes.
Okay, all right. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Jeff, if I just may re, re-ask the question. When we're saying redesign, we're talking about redesigning to omit the drive-through. We're okay with the design of the building as proposed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So really, it's just the omission of the drive-through component to the business?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
Just to re-verify, I think you said only 1% of the time there were 26 vehicles stacked up at, I think, was it Upland or wherever?
Yes, I believe it was Upland. That, that's my interpretation of those numbers. Yes, they, they used percentile. Generally, it was 85% and 15% is the opposite of that. So that, and, and keep in mind, that was for the, the time they studied. That's not for like a year. That's for the, the particular times they study. And so those may have been high times, they may have been low times, they may have been average times. There's no way to really know that.
But it's still a very low percentage.
It is a very low percentage.
Thank you.
And Jeff, we have tech, two studies, right? One is the traffic study, just to understand the vehicle circulation. And then a separate, which is the queuing study, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And we have the consultants from?
We have the consultant for K O A for to do the traffic study. I don't know if the applicant brought the, the applicant did the queuing study.
Okay, fair enough. Maybe we can invite the applicant at this moment to talk to us about the proposal. Name and address for the record, please. I'm getting it set up for you, Jeff.
No. Yeah, just, just let me know. Let me see if, I don't think we have one. So just say next slide. I'll forward it for you. Let me go next.
Yeah, sorry. That's okay. Good evening, chairs, members of the commission. My name is Jennifer Daw and I am the principal development lead for Chick-fil-A. On behalf of Chick-fil-A, we first want to thank staff for their hard work and collaboratively working with us over the past two years on this project. We are excited to serve the West Covina community by providing our wonderful hospitality and food. So Chick-fil-A is a fast food restaurant, which you can feel good about. Click, please. We were founded in 1946 by our founder, Truitt Cathy, who opened the first restaurant called The Dwarf Grill in Haightville, Georgia. The family-owned company pioneered the concept of a restaurant in shopping malls, opening its first mall location in 1967. And then our first freestanding location opened in 1986. To date, we have over 2,000 restaurants growing across the nation and soon we are entering Canada. With over $9 billion in sales, privately owned, we have sold over $5 billion and counting signature Chick-fil-A sandwiches. But we are more, but we pride ourselves as more than a restaurant. We are where good meets gracious. We cook. We just don't believe in our serving our Chick-fil-A sandwiches. We serve a meal made from fresh, high-quality ingredients. Everything on our menu is made from scratch daily, from our fresh squeezed lemonade, hand-chopped salads, hand-spun milkshakes. We are dedicated by providing fresh food, good nutrition, and assortment of healthy options for all. We focus on food, service, and hospitality. We want to be your home away from home, so we take care of our customers like family and provide a clean, welcoming dining experience. We prepare, but not just a meal, an experience. Everything we do is the greatest of care, from a clean table, efficient and excellent drive-through service, a pair of two pickles perfectly laid on a buttery bun. Our love is wrapped up into these little things and the in-between things that are always said but not felt. We believe. We believe our hearts that kindness is a higher calling. We want to know and serve the people in the community. We nourish them. We love seeing individuals, teen members, communities brighten lives by caring for others. From junior achievement, various chambers of Congress, we are even members of the Greater West Covina Business Association. Our operators find ways to partner with such organizations for events, donations, and to collaboratively work together, serving our communities. We also strive to offer employees and staff a positive place with opportunities for leadership development and promotion for management roles. We take care of, we know to take care of our guests means that we need to take care of our team members by offering a highly competitive wages that are frequently above minimum wage and that, and with team member scholarships. In fact, last year, we provided a total of $9 million in scholarships to over 3,500 team members. Our operators live within the community, they share, and they hire team members within the community. And we believe in partnering with a purpose. We build one legacy of a man with a pioneering experience, his faithful stewardship, his vision that being your best requires hard work. We receive over 40,000 applications every year from individuals who express wanting to be a Chick-fil-A operator. Once selected, the, the entry fee is only $10,000. This goes back to our founder's legacy as it cost him only $5,000 to open his first restaurant in 1946. That local ownership isn't unique, it's just the way we do business. We are closed on Sundays as more of a practical than a spiritual decision to allow our operators and their team members to enjoy the opportunity to rest and spend time with their families. We are more than just a restaurant. We are a home where the hugs are just as tender as the chicken and the smiles are just as sweet as the lemonade. The conversations are just nourishing as a meal. In fact, you will often find an operator breading the chicken, squeezing the lemonades, or squeezing the lemons for the lemonades to serve the guest. We are those who are, we are those who are there to serve. We are neighbors and their family. We are more than just a restaurant. We are where good meets gracious. Although Chick-fil-A started in 1946, the first Chick-fil-A restaurant actually opened in a food court in Greenbrier Mall in 1967. And as I said, we had our first standing restaurant in 1986. Starting in the mall, food courts allowed us to involve our strategy and deploy a focus to heavily-driven areas populated in the retail malls and traffic that supports it. The Plaza West Covina is one of the top malls, obviously, in the San Gabriel Valley. And we want to share that same customer profile with the anchors such as Target and Macy's, et cetera. The existing foods in the area include the same competitors that we like to have proximity across the country. Panera, Chipotle, Lazy Dog have all landed there for the same reason that we have selected this site, for the density, the retail synergy, the demographics. It's all there that which we want. And other restaurants often seem to also follow us because they know that we are actually very thorough in our due diligence. We, to this day, have an average of 4.5 million in sales for Chick-fil-A for each freestanding restaurant. And all of that sales tax property obviously goes back to the city. And we have never had to close a Chick-fil-A restaurant. Sorry, next slide. Drive-throughs are an important part of the success for Chick-fil-A business. Approximately 50% of our sales are produced through drive-through. We have been referred to the gold standard in drive-through service in the QSR magazines in 2016 and 17 for efficiency, accuracy, and the speed of our drive-through experience. We We focus on efficient service for our guests and being a good neighbor in the surrounding community. We are constantly innovating our drive-through system, making our service efficient and accurate with iPads, mobile ordering, and our Chick-fil-A One app. Our operators are fully engaged with the onsite drive-through circulation, finding ways to ensure no impacts to the public right of way. With our innovative technology, our operators use iPad ordering system, which is the face-to-face at the drive-through, where patrons can order and pay with a team member, so once they reach the pickup window, they receive their food and exit the site. The average order placement from placement to exit is about 30 to 45 seconds. We were the first in our industry to add the double drive-through lanes and are currently testing additional enhancements and features to our mobile order pickup in the drive-through. Next slide. When we started the project in 2016, working closely with planning staff, we have produced over 30 site plans as requests were made to enhance the ideas and address the concerns. Our team of experts, traffic, architects, civil engineering, existing and local operators, and including Chick-fil-A experts, examined various designs before selecting the one design that is best for the operator, the company, and the community. The site plan before you tonight is the request for the approval, and that was not just, and that was not just for, based on our team of experts, but the collaboration with the city to achieve the urban design and the P O D activation for the goals of West Covina. Before I sit down, I would like to also indicate that we have collected over 200 signatures of supporter cards for people who have expressed supports for Chick-fil-A at this location. This was done by extensive outreach to businesses and residents within the West Covina area. I will now turn this over to Tina Choi, who will take it there.
Thank you, good evening. I also apologize to my voice, I'm fighting a little bit of a cold. Honorable commissioners, my name is Tina Choi from the Englander Kenaby Allen Public Affairs Firm, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I wanted to start first by thanking the staff. They've been an amazing staff to work with, very collaborative, very transparent with us, and very diligent, so thank you very much. Many of the design changes you will see today were in large part because of the planning staff's request to fulfill and meet many of the goals of the updated downtown plan, general plan, to encourage pedestrian orientation and create sidewalk, outdoor dining activation within an urban design and layout. I also want to clarify, I believe, one of the commissioners inquired about whether we were advised of the drive-through, kind of the policy status on drive-through. We were advised that the drive-through was being considered by the city council, and in 2016, in the city council action, we were also advised for this site, drive-throughs would be allowed on a case-by-case basis, which is why we continue to work with staff in good faith. We submitted the original plans on November 22, 2016, and since December 22, 2016, staff conveyed specific ideas, suggestions to activate this corner, which currently has zero pedestrian activity or business activity since Elephant Bar closed. Can we go to slide five? Okay. That was the original submitted plan, and as the planning director noted, it was absent many of the elements, enhanced elements, that we incorporated as part of our two-year collaboration with staff. We redesigned our plan, as Jennifer said, internally, a total of 30 times, with five rounds of official plans going to planning staff to meet many of their requests. Slides six and seven will show the site plan that reflect these changes. We also made extensive changes in detail over the period of close to two years now, and if you can go to slide seven and through 12, I can kind of narrate them because I know it's kind of hard to see some of the smaller fonts, but these are the changes that we made in good faith that staff recommended we do. We moved our drive-through to not be visible from the street front, therefore sinking it into the middle of the site. We moved the entire building closer to the sidewalk, including adding an enhanced landscape outdoor dining area to activate the corner, the street corner. We expanded and increased the outdoor dining seating, which we did to now have 41% of our dining seats are located outside in the outdoor dining patio area to activate that sidewalk. We widened both sidewalks along Vincent and Lakes at 10 feet to again promote pedestrian foot traffic. We added, as the director mentioned, an arbor trellis feature to provide an entrance feature to make this an outdoor dining area and not just a fast-food restaurant. Per staff's request, we also did a one-on-one outreach meeting event at the Colony, at the abutting residential Colony complex, where the majority of the 80 people who came, came to the event and supported us and signed a petition to indicate that they are supportive and excited to be able to walk to a restaurant near where they lived. That principle meets and meets the criteria that staff alluded to relative to mixed-use development. The mixed-use development can only be realized if people can literally walk and/or work, in this case, eat, near where they live. This was not an amenity and opportunity that existed for the Colony residents. Thus, they came to our one-on-one event and signed a very extensive support petition. We volunteered to study four sites of nearby and comparable CFA sites for extensive traffic and queuing study. I know you guys heard about that already. The results of which staff agrees concluded no significant traffic impact to 10 intersections that were studied. That's in the staff report, pages 11, 12, and 13. We obtained maximum queuing data, also from the four sites above, which showed that, as you heard, four out of the, I'm sorry, three out of the four sites showed maximum car queuing at an average count of 17, with the highest showing 26 cars, which is the Upland site, which is about 1% of probability. But I have to also detail, that site, restaurant, was built in 2008. It's one of our older restaurants, and in terms of efficiencies, particularly with not having a dual order lane, is a very unusual site relative to impact. Thus, that 26 queuing of cars in all the sites that I've done for Chick-fil-A all over the SoCal area, we never see cars queued more than 15, 16, 17 cars. Staff then asked us to redesign the queuing and onsite accommodation to be the most accommodating of any CFA location in the SoCal area. We did, and the result is a queuing capacity completely onsite that captures 27 cars to mitigate the possibility of any backup into the public streets. Staff then asked us to enhance our onsite protocols for order efficiencies, and we explained our iPad order and payment-taking protocols, which attains 30% more efficiency, and we also committed to two or more actual staff onsite at peak time for order-taking and traffic control as needed. Closing on two years, and this is slides 12, 13, 14, 15, we now have a project before you, which significant staff input and redesign, with, I'm sorry, significant staff input and redesign, to meet the planning department's goals for urban design, pedestrian orientation, and activation needs. We also did extensive outreach per Jennifer Daw's comments, because Chick-fil-A sincerely and deeply cares about community and wants to become the fabric of the West Covina community. We met and presented approximately 25 times with relevant and notable stakeholders, leaders, and community organizations such as the Greater West Covina Business Association, Lions Club, West Covina Historical Society, West Covina Police Department, West Covina Fire Department, the Kiwanis Club, the Rotary Club, and we participated as a community partner or sponsor to various notable events, including the Lions Club 48th Annual Night on the Town, Greater West Covina Business Organization's Expo Grand Opening, and the Greater West Covina Pumpkin Run. We did this outreach because CFA's ethos, Chick-fil-A's ethos is to become part of the community it seeks to serve, because we see every one of these groups and individuals as our partners, with common goals and dreams to work together to create jobs, help, and contribute to philanthropic initiative for the West Covina community, whether it's for kids, schools, public safety heroes, or small business owners, parks. CFA stewardship and commitment is unwavering. Current CFA operators throughout the SoCal area are generous philanthropic sponsors of schools, parks, senior centers, chambers, fire stations, police stations in their immediate area. It's part of their DNA. So I'm going to go now to slide number, should be, sorry. Can I get the next slide, Jeff? One more? Okay, thank you. I'm going to spend a little bit of time at this point to talk about some of the staff concerns and requests. First, a drive-through, as I said, is allowed on this site. It is allowed by the city council action in 2016 to look at every project one-on-one. Thus, the CUPN administrative use before, permit is before you today for consideration. The staff also agrees in their report to you that all the studies that were required and asked for by staff, including traffic, queuing, noise, air quality, vibration, regarding any of these impacts, concluded the same, no significant impact. They're again in the staff report, pages 11, 12, and 13. In the slides 17, 18, 19, 20, the staff concerns are addressed, including the director clarified a code provision which requires that we meet at least one of the requirement for separation and noise code issues. For separation, we meet two out of the three mitigation measures, and for noise, we meet five out of the eight. That is also disclosed on pages eight, nine, and 10 of the staff report. On the economic impact, staff states that traffic and queuing issues would create barriers of access for patrons to go to other retail and restaurant establishments, and thus discourage these businesses from coming into this area. That is counter to staff's recommendation and conclusion on pages 11, 12, and 13, where they concur with the traffic analysis and queuing analysis, that there is no significant impact. In addition, as Jennifer Daw mentioned, many of the high-end retailers and restaurants actually follow instead in Chick-fil-A's footsteps in terms of trending to where they want to locate next. First, I'm sorry, the second is, the staff exonerated traffic and queuing report, I'm sorry, so the second is, our statistics show that alternatively, as I said, many higher restaurants follow in Chick-fil-A's footsteps, and that leads me to the visual design, which is a second concern. Staff states that they are trying to achieve an urban design to promote those who live near to be able to walk, to eat, work, and play. Over the last two years, we redesigned this building, per staff's request extensively, and we did one-on-one outreach to the Colony residents, where they are now in full support, the majority of them in full support of this project. We also changed out the windows and the exterior finishings to provide more transparencies in line with the planning staff's wish to achieve a more urban design and look. In this aspect, we did fulfill and meet the staff's requirement and goal of visual and design to fulfill pedestrian orientation and urban look for this area. We also volunteered the four sites, as I said, for an extensive traffic study, and in that aspect, we did fulfill the statistics and conclusions relative to traffic impact and traffic generation. All of those studies concluded, as I said, in pages 11, 12, and 13, that none of the traffic and queuing results and statistics have significant or substantive impact. In closing, the job creation, the job creation factor is one of the primary goals of this, sorry, the job creation factor is also part of the economic impact, which was not mentioned by staff, and as Jennifer Daw stated, leads to the creation of 60 to 80 jobs. We updated a letter that I'm going to submit to the commission secretary. It's a letter in response to an opposition letter that you have in your package from Foothill Transit, and it basically disputes and refutes some of the assumptions made by Foothill Transit that our queuing and traffic circulation will impact their bus stops, so I'll go ahead and submit this for your consideration. We are at one with the planning staff on urban development and design and pedestrian-oriented development, and activating this corner with humming pedestrian outdoor eating activity and business activity. This is why we worked so close with them for two years to redesign this project. The element of drive-through is needed. It is critical for this demographic area, this marketplace, and this location, as it speaks to the demographic needs. But we also added pedestrian-oriented development initiatives and outdoor eating activation elements to address both market needs, those who want to walk, and frankly, those who may be parents with five kids in the car rushing to a soccer game and may desire a drive-through option. The example staff references of Chick-fil-A sites without a drive-through, such as Downtown L.A., Westwood, are not comparable to this site. The Downtown L.A. site sits right on top of the main metro blue and green lines, substations, and the Westwood site is literally within and adjacent to the UCLA campus and the ground floor of a high-rise office tower, and is about 30% the size of this site. The other locations that were mentioned in staff's report without a drive-through are either near or within a university or college campus, or linked in with a major transit, major transit hub center. Job creation, economic vitality, activation of the site to encourage pedestrian foot traffic, bike traffic, transit use to the restaurant, urban design, city tax revenue generation, encouraging sidewalk-adjacent outdoor dining, these are all goals we agree 120% with staff on, and this project meets all of those goals. Currently, there is a degraded abandoned site without any foot traffic, never mind business activity. Chick-fil-A wants to bring a wholesome, family-serving restaurant to this wonderful community to create 80 local jobs with an average revenue of $4 million per site with significant tax revenues and to become a part of this community. We appreciate your time and request an approval of the project as proposed by the applicant and a denial of the planning staff's recommendation. In recognition of the need for specific findings that may need to be made in the event of an approval of our proposed project, we have also prepared a draft for the commission and planning staff's consideration for approval findings. This is because the proposal you have before you of a motion includes the project, however, without the drive-through. So I will also be submitting that to staff, respectfully to the staff and commission for your consideration. Thank you, and we look forward to your decision today and encourage the approval of this project, which has significant community support from many of the constituents and citizens of this great city. Thank you.
Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Redd?
Yeah, I'll ask one. I have a question.
Tina?
Yeah, just real quick. Listening to your presentation, it becomes quite obvious that you're not interested at all in a continuance.
No, sir.
To redesign without the drive-through, okay. And there are, there are 2,000 Chick-fil-A's, I heard. Is that worldwide, or, oh, here comes Jenna.
Oh, sorry.
2,000?
Over 2,000 Chick-fil-A's nationwide. We're in all states except for Hawaii, Alaska, and Vermont, and we are starting those hopefully next year, and then going internationally, starting in Canada.
Okay, and what percentage of the 2,000 do not have a drive-through?
I would say it's a very small percent. I mean, out here, the ones that Tina indicated, the UCLA, Seventh and Fig, those are really our only non-drive-throughs. Nationwide, I would say it's a very, very, like, less than 1%.
Okay, because, you know, I don't think anybody in this room does not want Chick-fil-A. So the only, the issue that's before us is, is the drive-through component. That's, that's why we're here. I have another just question, maybe for Tina. When I met with you a few months ago, we talked about my concern of the corner being dark on Sundays. 52 Sundays a year, it's dark. So you indicated at that time that you, or the operator, might be willing to entertain the idea of activating the corner with some type of car show or some the idea of activating the corner with some type of car show or some other activity or event that would activate the corner, and not every week, but, you know, would somehow be, you know, lively on Sundays. So can you, one of you address that?
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. That was indeed a very, very helpful suggestion. We did meet with the landlord, and we do have plans to work hand-in-hand with the community for community-serving events on a Sunday. I've also met with the police captain to ensure that we are going to be collaborating with the LAPD for an adequate security, lighting, and camera system to make sure that that corner is not only activated for those Sundays with community events, but also safe.
Tina or Jennifer, is it my understanding, then, that if we were to make a recommendation to continue this, to omit the drive-through, that this is not in your best interest? You would rather go for the denial?
I can let Jennifer speak to it, but the exclusion of the drive-through on this site, particularly relative to the demographics in the market, would essentially set up the operator that we hand this location to up for failure. They would not be able to meet kind of the profit and revenue margins.
Would it be, I guess, a deal breaker, then? Would hurt or impact?
I will, so yes, we would take the denial and move forward, appealing it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the?
I have a question. Is it, is there a potentially bigger layout that we could pull up? As it stands, where, where's the current trash enclosures?
The existing ones right now?
Yeah, or where are the ones that you're proposing?
So the ones that?
Okay. And so would the bank have their own? Is that the one over there?
Yeah, I can try to answer that. The building is so different now. I believe that the trash enclosures are somewhere by the building now, behind the Elephant Bar Building, I believe, but it's not been something I've looked at for a while. And the bank building is in a different place, too. I don't know where that trash enclosure is. Maybe they share it. I don't, I don't know. But they are proposing a new trash enclosure for the bank building, and then for the restaurant building, the trash enclosure would be here. Both of them are new.
On average, I would just be curious as to what they're proposing to fit into that trash enclosure, what sized containers? Because the trucks that we have are quite, quite large, and with the concern for traffic, that could be another element as well.
So typically, we always work with waste management or whomever the trash pickup company is, and they identify how many cubes of yards, you know, for debris, and we work with them and make sure that we have the correct bin sizes there for pickup. So that trash enclosure would be specifically for us, the one that as you come in off lakes, and then the smaller one is for the bank building.
Sometimes that's the last thing that you think of when you're, when you're building this stuff.
Exactly.
I would also just, this being my first meeting, I haven't been with you through the two-year process or four-year process, and so just thank you for, you know, your commitment to coming to the community. I've witnessed you guys work in other communities, and you certainly do partner, and that's something that you guys do exhibit. So, you know, I think it would be a shame to see this project walk, especially given the fact that in reading so many of the emails sent to the department in, in support of it, there's definitely a want here in the community. The only thing I saw in opposition was they might just want a different restaurant, but other than that, it wasn't, you know, anything else for that property. So thank you for your time and all your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, one, I wanted to clarify, excuse my interruption. The other option would be, because I handed in for the record findings for an approval that the Commission can make, it would be to approve the project with the drive-through, and that those findings are here. And if that was the outcome, and for example, if the staff still needed some time to review it after the Commission vote, we would be open to taking the vote and then having staff come back on December 11th just to bona fide and double-check the proposed findings to make sure that they're accurate.
Procedurally, though, it's the staff's responsibility to draft up the conditions in consultation with legal counsel if need be, as well as, I'm sure, people above the director's position. So let's listen to some public testimony first, get some public testimony in, and we may invite you back at the conclusion of public testimony.
Thank you very much.
To rebut a little bit, and then at that point, we'll conclude, have a little Commissioner dialogue, and let's see where we go from there.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time as well. Just a couple administrative things I need to take care of. I have three cards here. I'm not sure if they're in opposition. Sorry again, or again, one is from Chris Miller. Are you in support or opposition of this?
In support.
In support, thank you. And I have a second card for Mr. Grivich, support or opposition?
Well, I'm in support of what they request that that was staff recommended.
Okay. I will put you in for. Okay, thank you, Mr. Grivich. And finally, Claire from L O G. You're neutral on this one. I assume you're the consultant that prepared the analysis of the K O A report. Are you wishing to speak as well under public testimony?
No. Available for questions.
Okay. Okay. All right. So with that said, let's get started with Mr. David Farias. That will be followed by Monica Farias. I'm trying to do this in alphabetical order. David, feel free to step up your name and address for the record. We will be holding speaker time to five minutes. Please just be mindful, there's a clock behind us. Thank you. David, take it away.
Good evening. My name is David Farias. I live at 2601 South Moreland Place in West Covina, and I'm here to support Chick-fil-A on their request for approval, not the staff recommendation. I think, as you can see from their report and their passion, they've been wanting to bring a restaurant into this city for a long time. They've worked, as you can hear, they've worked with the staff on different, many different iterations on, on what is being recommended by the staff on where to put that parking structure, because I've seen the plans where they had it in the front on Vincent, and then they put it in the back away from traffic or away from public view, and it's also conducive to pedestrian traffic as well. So they've actually worked very hard to work with the city to get your approval on this restaurant in that location with the drive-through. I don't see any issue that you would have potentially with cars going into the traffic on the lakes and even in that parking lot. They've got a queue that looks like it's a two-lane queue that would provide adequate spacing for traffic. I know that the big issue seems to be drive-through because that was the development plan for the city in downtown at that time, and it was right in that gray area in that window. And I think that that would be a shame if we were to take this opportunity to have a restaurant come in that's going to generate potentially $4 million in revenue away from them because of a drive-through that they've already designed that meets the needs and is actually in, in compliance with what some of the staff's concerns are with regards to that traffic. This company is really ready to bring through and be a positive influence in the community, reach out to the youth, offer scholarships and a lot of things to this community, and it would be a shame if we didn't approve it the way they recommended it because they've really worked hard on this. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Monica, that will be followed by Mr. Grivich. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Monica Farias. I'm also at, well, I'm here representing the Greater West Covina, so our address is 198 Plaza Drive in, we're inside Plaza West Covina. Good evening, members of the Commission. Again, my name is Monica Farias. I'm the Executive Director for the Greater West Covina Business Association, and I'm here this evening to speak on behalf also of the nine board members of the association. The G W C strongly supports the Chick-fil-A restaurant coming to our city. We strongly believe Chick-fil-A is a great addition to our city and our community. I would, it would create tax revenue for the city. West Covina, it would also provide West Covina with jobs for the community and, and everything else that they said. So we definitely are in support of, of the proposed, of their proposed restaurant with the drive-through. So thank you so much for your consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Grivich, followed by Dane Johnson.
Jim Grivich. I also support the Chick-fil-A application with the drive-through as they presented. I wanted to add a little bit of information, talk a little bit about what I would refer to as de facto law and de jure law. The city has a plan, downtown plan, that says they don't want drive-throughs, but in actual fact, de facto law, Vincent Avenue is a drive-through business. If you look, drive, drive south on Vincent Avenue down from the freeway down to Glendora Avenue, and you will observe virtually all but one business is actually a drive-through on that street. And I'm just going to list them. There is McDonald's, Starbucks, El Pollo Loco, Del Taco, West Covina Cleaners, Kentucky Fried Chicken, the West Covina Car Wash, the Bank of America, and Chase Bank. They're all drive-through businesses. In fact, talking to the West Covina Business Association, that's a great marketing thing. We probably have the most drive-through food court in the Sangro Valley when you look at it. I've never seen anything like it with all of them together. The traffic impact comments that have been made, I did want to talk about that because the fact is the people in West Covina drive wherever they go. There is a small percentage that walk, and of course, we should accommodate them, but if a business can't do accommodate the automobile, they won't be in business in West Covina. And fortunately, this restaurant has plenty of parking, plenty of drive-through capacity, so I don't think that would be an issue. I am concerned about the traffic at the corner of Vincent just south of the freeway and South Garvey Avenue, Garvey Avenue South, but that's really caused by the, the Colony. I understand the mall's going to put in, what, a thousand apartments? That's, that's inside the business plan. So you, this, this traffic impact is nothing compared to all of that. So I, I do think there, there is a potential issue at some point in the future where the city's going to have some problems with traffic. The, the other thing I wanted to talk about is this process. It's been mentioned several times, but there's never been any judgmental statements made, and I'm going to make a judgmental statement. It's taken two years for this application to get to this point. I think that is business hostile to make a company spend two years.
Please hold your applause, please.
To become part of this community. There was statement made that five separate applications were, plans, formal plans were submitted to the city, all of which required redoing of the plans. I don't understand why five times plans had to be resubmitted and then resubmitted and then resubmitted. It just doesn't make any sense to me. And my real concern here is in my other capacity when I talk to the City Council about finance. If the city is actively hostile to businesses, we're not going to be generating the revenue. This, this business is a major revenue generator for the city, and to be hostile to them coming is just counterproductive in many, many ways. And I'm not just talking about this business, I'm talking about any business. No business would have to do what these people had to do to be, to join our community. And I, I hope this Commission will try to deal with a process that is effective. I see no reason for more than two iterations of any planning process. The city, they submit, the staff makes recommendations, they submit again, maybe a final clarification. I don't see any reason for more than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dane Johnson, followed by Chris Miller.
Good evening, Dane Johnson, 30-year resident of West Covina, 1043 Silver Birch Place, and grateful for you all serving us the way you do. I want to just say I support this project mainly because I love the option of having a Chick-fil-A in this location, and I want to just say that this concern about wanting pedestrian, I, I understand the, the plan calling for encouraging pedestrians and so on and so forth. Folks are not moseying around at that intersection. They're not. That may be happening over around the theater, that may be happening over in, over around the, the other area over around the Colonies. That's not happening at that intersection. So let's acknowledge that that intersection is busy. It's going to be busy. So let's just say that we're going to have cars going through there, let's invite people to come off the freeway on their way home, go into Upland, and instead of stopping and sitting in 26-car lane in Upland, they can stop and get their Chick-fil-A in West Covina and spend their money there. I didn't understand the $4 million. Was that $4 million in sales or revenue? Do we know the answer to that?
Maybe we can ask the applicant on rebuttal to answer that.
I hope it's $4 million to us, but that, that would be.
Probably no.
I'm guessing that that's, I'm guessing that's sales, but, but my whole point is just to say, man, this is a great opportunity for us to put something there that would be an awesome, awesome thing to have, and we're going to have traffic there. It's going to be there, but it's going to be a great place for people to come, and they're not going to be negatively impacted just because they're, the pedestrians walking back and forth. So I just love the idea of having Chick-fil-A there.
Thank you, Mr. Chris Miller, followed by Giselle Regalado.
Chris Miller, 1022 West Ponte de Avenue. The Council approved the, to look at drive-throughs in the area. As Mr. Grivich has stated, there's plenty of drive-throughs in the area. One thing that the city manager and other people have stated that we need to control leakage, leakage of business, of coming out. Well, this opportunity isn't going to be leakage, it's going to be filling. We're going to be filling a desire from surrounding communities to come here and spend their money in West Covina. In and out is a successful business. Other than in and out, what business in food in West Covina that comes close to $4 million in sales a year? You know, we're going to have a lot more traffic due to the mall development with the five-story mixed-use apartments or whatever that's going in, plus portos. People that are north of the freeway, that's going to affect their drive home. I don't mind it because it's revenue that I don't have to pay for into the city to support my police and fire. The, one thing with surveys and looking at traffic, looking at the amount of cars going through a drive-through, well, you get to tweak where you look at. It's kind of funny that Upland and Irvine were picked because there aren't Chick-fil-A's. I mean, do a search on Google. There's not much there. Upland, you have two to the east. Upland's on the 210 in the middle, and east of it on the 15, there's two, and there's one over by us in Glendora. So there's not very many in the area. We have four currently around us. Irvine also doesn't have a lot. Was La Mirada one of the ones that we were listed? La Mirada has quite a few around. Also, you know, as far as the workforce at Chick-fil-A, if you ever go in a, in a Chick-fil-A, it's a very diverse workforce, both in age and ethnicity, race. So not only do teens get to work there, but also you see seniors working there. Not a lot of fast food has that diversity. Take, for example, Jack in the Box. It, it's not very diverse, so it gives an opportunity for jobs for various people. Not only that, a Chick-fil-A in Southern California, I did, you know, some looking up, employs someone with Down Syndrome. You know, imagine how many opportunities are given to people with disabilities. This is a way for people to, you know, give back to the community and earn a living. I support it. Most of the people on social media, media support it. You know, most of the opposition was based on beliefs. Well, sorry. Well, sorry, beliefs don't have any, you know, part of a business. It's all about revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Giselle, followed by Ryan Shea.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Giselle, and I represent West Covina Smiles Dentistry, and also on the Advisory Committee for the GWC Business Association, also a frequent patron of the downtown West Covina area, and lover of Chick-fil-A. I think Chick-fil-A would be a great replacement in that area where the Elephant used, Elephant Bar used to be. It's a familiar restaurant, it's a very lucrative venture for both the local business owners around the area, and it brings a lot of business awareness to the downtown area that you guys would want to see. And I believe, as a frequent Chick-fil-A patron in Walnut and City of Industry, it would bring so much more, just people coming from over there. Because the Walnut and the City of Industry drive-through is very small. It's maybe like, it could fit maybe ten or twelve cars at most. But even so, with ten or twelve cars, their efficiency and accuracy of taking my order is very, very, very fast. So even with the ten to twelve cars in those locations, this one's proposing twenty cars. That is amazing. I don't even, I think that'll bring so much business and so much more people there, but it's not going to obstruct the traffic. Plus, you want that extra traffic. But yes, they created that so to eliminate the congestion on any of the nearby roads. And I believe that approval would benefit West Covina in general. And Chick-fil-A is not Chick-fil-A without a drive-through. So I thank you for your consideration for West Covina to eat more chicken.
Thank you, Giselle. Ryan Shea, and that will be concluding with, I believe it's Donasi, or I believe his last name's Zamora. My apologies if I butchered that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Ryan Shea with Cal Bay Development, based in Manhattan Beach, California. I'm one of the partners with Cal Bay, with the parent company of, the ownership of the property, or landlords of the property. And I've been involved with this site from day one, since we acquired the site about two years ago from the family that originally owned and developed this. And this goes back to late 2016, when Elephant Bar had first started defaulting, as they were across a lot of properties that they had. The old, the prior ownership was not positioned to ever put any money in the property to redevelop it, to deal with a vacancy. Our primary business is acquiring sites that need redevelopment and need to be improved, either through development, redevelopment. We specialize in buying prime sites like this. We only do retail and restaurant development. We focus on sites that, that can attract interest from the best-in-class restaurants, national credit restaurants, that are gonna be around in twenty, thirty years. We're not, we really don't go buy strip centers, we don't, we really are not an incubator of sort of startup restaurants. We really focused on restaurants that are gonna be around and be successful. Case in point, Elephant Bar, that, that bar, that, that place opened in two thousand and four, only made it twelve years, and really was faltering many years before it even closed. So we're focused on, on, on developing for tenants like Chick-fil-A, who are really, really best-in-class, the number-one QSR as far as average sales volume by a long shot. They're wildly popular, they're family-friendly, they really design their restaurants, they go the extra mile in designing their restaurants, way beyond what you see with a KFC or an El Pollo Loco or quote-unquote "fast food." I mean, you can see from, you can see from the renderings what they've done here. I mean, it's, it's, it's just above and beyond. And that's why we do business with them, we have other deals going with them throughout Southern California. We're really excited about bringing them to this site. They, and, and, and again, for all those reasons, we signed a long-term commitment with them, long-term lease for the site. So I, I'm here today to ask for your support, and, and to kind of, I made a few notes, you know, during the presentation tonight, that I wanted to touch on. You know, a bunch of times tonight, there's been this mention of this mixed-use overlay envisioned for the site. You know, this is just one property of a big area that was identified for this mixed-use overlay, and, and staff multiple times has said that this, their vision for this site is a, some big mixed-use property. Even if we wanted to do that, which we don't, even if we hadn't signed a long-term lease with Chick-fil-A, which we have, we couldn't do that here. Pacific Western Bank has a long-term lease. So it's not like we can just go develop half the site. I mean, this, the Pacific Western Bank is there, they're gonna be there, it's, it's a parking lot that functions as one. This is a, this is a restaurant site, this is not a housing site, it's not big enough for that, there's a lease encumbering it. This site's been vacant for two years now, we've constantly had problems with transients and other unauthorized people on that site. Unlike other vacant properties we've dealt with, where it's just one building, we can just fence it off. We can't do that here. There's a bank that's open, so we're constantly having to hire security to deal with that. We've had complaints from residents, from the colonies, we're, we're trying to be good neighbors and good landlords, and we always deal with it immediately, but there's not an unlimited budget to keep dealing with that. What you have before you tonight is a project that's been in the works for two years. On many other projects, I'm the one taking the lead on doing what Jennifer and Tina are doing, so I can, I can, I know what they've been through. Well over a hundred thousand dollars has probably spent, been spent thus far. And that's probably way lowballing, how much money has been spent on thirty site plan iterations, five applications. You've got a great project before you tonight, you have certainty, you know what you're getting. If you guys deny this, or tell them to go back to the drawing board and get rid of the drive-through, I'm not speaking for them, I'm just telling you my hunch, this project's not gonna go anywhere. It's gonna probably sit vacant for another two years, because that building is not usable. There's no, there's no other national, high-volume, first-class tenants that can use that building. It, it, it has to be torn down in all scenarios. So I would, I ask you to approve the project tonight as originally approved. Let's not take the chance on this project sitting vacant for another two years. The residents around don't want that, I don't wanna keep getting calls, people complaining about shopping carts and people being there. Let's move this project forward. It's been, it's been two years. I ask for your support, as, as the applicant proposed.
Commissioner Redd, Ryan? We have a few questions.
Sorry, you mean to run away so quick?
That's okay. Are you also the, is the bank your tenant also?
Yes.
Okay. And do you exclusively represent Chick-fil-A, or do you have other?
I'm not a broker, I'm a, I'm a partner, I'm a principal. I'm one of the partners of Cal Bay.
Does Cal Bay?
Cal Bay Development's, we are only principals and landlords, we don't do any brokerage. We own the site, we own the land.
Okay.
When we bought the site two years ago, the Elephant Bar had already closed, so that lease was gone. Pacific Western Bank has an existing lease for over ten years, and they have no interest in leaving, they wanna be there, they want the project to happen. They've accommodated all the site plan changes, because they want something to happen. They're sick and tired of, of all the things that go along with vacant properties, not just West Covina. There's, the problems you, we incur with vacant properties here is consistent with what we're seeing all throughout Southern California. It's very difficult to keep people off of vacant property, and that's all gonna go away when Chick-fil-A opens. You don't, we, you don't typically see transients hanging out at open properties, it's, it's vacant properties. And I can't fence it off because I got a bank there.
Right. So you entered into a long-term lease contingency, contingent upon approval, I would say, with...
There's a long-term, there's a long-term commitment in place, and the property's not available, so I'm not, I'm not really sure why staff made mention of other restaurants expressing interest, not available. We've signed a long-term commitment with Chick-fil-A, and we're fully committed to this project.
Now, Cal Bay has control of that property?
We own it, we own, we bought it two years ago.
You own it, you own it.
We own the land, we bought it two years ago, yeah.
So because you own it though, you control who could come into the property?
We've already signed a lease, we, we've already signed a lease.
Right.
So again, that's why I'm not sure why there was...
But a restaurant can approach you though, and ask to potentially consider a restaurant use on the property?
We've already leased it, so, so just like with any property that's already been leased, I tell them it's not available, it's been leased. There's a, there is a lease signed.
Okay, thank you. I would ask folks in the audience to please keep their comments down. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
Okay.
Would the applicant like to come up and just provide some closing comments, a bit of a rebuttal? Brief presentation, please, just because we're getting late into the evening. Thank you. There was discussion about the four million dollars, maybe if you can just briefly touch on that?
Sure. Oh.
Okay, I, I don't have cards. That pretty much represents all the cards I have.
My apologies, I walked downstairs.
Okay, okay. Please help yourself down, we can get a card to you afterwards, don't worry. Yeah. Thank you.
Pardon my informality, I had no intention to speak tonight, but I did come because I have been interested in the, in the topic.
Before continuing, your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Eric Intermill, we operate a restaurant at one twenty-eight North Grand Avenue, it's Craft Hill. And that's why I came up here to speak, I've been in the restaurant business for twenty years. And a couple things I just wanted to point out to put in perspective, they're talking, and this might clarify, their national average is four-point-four million dollars per unit per year, but that's a national average, it's capable of doing more revenue than that if it gets community support, which clearly it has a lot of it. My restaurant, which I'd like to think is loved in the city, and we won Small Business, you know, Business of the Year two thousand and eighteen in West Covina, we're doing about less than third of that revenue, maybe one-point-two, one-point-four. I can't, I wouldn't put it specific right now, but the reality is, a full-service restaurant in what we do and what a lot of the community has asked for is not feasible. It will never generate the amount of revenue that they do. So another thing that was brought up was In-N-Out Burger as being one of the, one of the best facilities. Well, In-N-Out's national average is only about, national, western region average is only about two-and-a-half million. So you're talking almost double the revenue potential of an In-N-Out Burger. And also, they have accolades from the, from the QSR magazine, if any of you read QSR magazine, in addition to all the awards they're winning, there's also speculation that Chick-fil-A by 2020 will be the third-largest grossing per, overall QSR restaurant in the nation, it will overtake Subway. So just things to consider, three-hundred-and-eighty-two cars per hour, I have no idea what the check average is, but I assume fifteen, sixteen dollars, that's six-thousand dollars per hour. In my restaurant, we'd be fortunate to do that on a daily average. Yes, we do more than that on Friday and Saturday night, but on Monday, Tuesday, well, Monday we're closed, I'll get to that. But it, it's phenomenal what they're doing. So with that said, creating eighty jobs, my restaurant's capable of creating about thirty-two jobs in the city. So you talk about the economic impact is pretty significant, and right now, the only employees that are touching that property is the police department, which is a very scarce resource. So by them coming in and revitalizing that, it actually supports some of the municipal issues as well. And then to speak to the day off, as an owner-operator, we choose to close on Mondays, they choose Sunday. Whether it be a day of the week, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, it's a quality of life, and it's fair to the employees that work in the establishment to be able to take a day off. To that point, I, I would point out with absolutely no offense, but city staff have three days off per week, because they determine it's better to work longer hours on those few days and have a couple days off a week. So I think it's only fair that staff have that opportunity. So with that said, I mean, don't miss this opportunity. If, if it comes down to this meeting and, and it's not voted for and they walk, to Ryan's sentiment, that's two more years that that, that site may sit vacant, and we've actually never met in person, but I'm one of the people that called him about a year ago, looking interested in the property. And to that point, he said, no, it's not available, we only work with major retail chains, people that are sustainable. As a private owner-operator and a small guy, they weren't even interested in talking to me, because they're vetting people out, they're doing that job in advance to make sure they get the best tenant in the space. So I, that's just my own personal suggestion, don't miss this opportunity, it's a tremendous revenue generator for the city, and I think the sentiment surrounds you that people wanna eat more chicken. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. So just to confirm, no one else wishing to speak on this item? I know there's some folks in the audience that may have shared some comments, but didn't come up, going once and going twice. All right, Tina, this is your show.
Thank you, Chairman. We started this journey with the city, and when I say the city, I include all this passionate supporters behind me, for two years, to work on this project, because we were told that this body could decide on the element of drive-through on a case-by-case basis. And it was with that strong hope that we worked in diligence and good faith, and with both staff and the community, to redesign this project a total of thirty-five times, to address traffic, pedestrian orientation, queuing concerns, landscaping concerns, urban design elements, et cetera. Revitalizing this corner is of utmost importance, I think you've heard from everybody, including the landlord and the community. Job creation is of utmost importance, I think you've heard from your constituents about the need for job creation. Tax revenue, and let me clarify, the four million is gross sales, not revenue. The revenue potential for the city is also relevant. The pedestrian orientation for the colony residents, who we actually heard from and received support from in terms of being able to walk somewhere where they can eat, was also critical. I've also heard, I wasn't aware, of our project also being relevant relative to site safety. Basically changing a very prominent corner of your community from a blighted corner that's a safety hazard into one that has economic vitality and revitalization. So I really encourage you to listen not just to our testimony and appreciate our diligence over the last two years and patience, but really hear the passion in the audience behind me. They're looking to you and your leadership to provide this amenity and this opportunity for the city to finally be able to welcome, and for Chick-fil-A to finally say that they are part of the larger, this great West Covina community. So that, I'll close, and with one request, I know, Commissioners, you still have to deliberate on rules and policies, but if the commission were inclined to approve the project, we would be happy to come back on December eleventh with findings on approval that staff is amenable to. So we're very open to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Tina. Okay. At this point, I will close up public testimony, I will ask folks in the audience, just to please hold your comments as we try to deliberate and discuss some of the issues as it relates to this proposal, so I would just really ask folks to, if you could keep your emotions on check, I understand there's a lot of sentiment regarding this proposal, but this group, it is, is really tasked with focusing on the use of land and land use issues, and that's what we're about to undertake right now as we deliberate the proposal. And I will be talking shortly about some of my positions regarding this proposal as well, so I would really appreciate your cooperation, so thank you. Yes.
Couple things that I think are important to, for consideration. These are in no particular order. The, the drive-through use is a little confusion, because this, this has nothing to do with the downtown plan, it was submitted prior to the downtown plan taking effect, so it was reviewed under the RC zone. So whether or not it's in the downtown plan doesn't really have any effect on our discussion tonight, it's, it was allowed in the drive, in the RC, so that's why, it's a case-by-case to, as, as was expressed. I, I think, I believe, the queuing study was turned in about a year ago, so I'm, I'm having trouble remembering all the details, but I believe the queuing study was done based on Chick-fil-A's that were near a freeway, understanding that they probably have different traffic generation than those that aren't near a freeway. The applicant submitted, and then worked with staff, they chose to redesign, staff gave them some comments, they, they provided, they asked questions about what might be helpful, we gave them those recommendations, they weren't requirements, they were recommendations, and then they, they took the opportunity to redesign, and they came forward when they were ready to come forward. We had to do an environmental after they were finished with the project, which was basically in May of this year, April, May of this year is when they said, we're ready to go forward, start the environmental. So this had, this had to do with them redesigning, I would believe that they would testify to that fact. They, they wanted to redesign, as they've expressed here tonight, to try to fit better into the context that wasn't required, that's what they desired to do. They could have come forward at almost any time during this process, even with the original plan, it could have come forward, but they chose not to do that. There's been a lot of discussion about fiduciary interest, how much money they're gonna make, that, just to remind the Planning Commission, perhaps the audience as well, that, that's not under, as, as the chairman just pointed out, that's not under the purview of the Planning Commission. None of the findings that, that you're looking at tonight have anything to do with the fiduciary ability of this, of this proposal. So those aren't things that you should be considering, that, that would be something that the city council would have some ability, but the Planning Commission doesn't have that purview. There was some discussion about significant impact from the applicant, I just wanna make sure everyone's clear, significant impact is talking about the environmental. So because you don't have any significant impacts environmental, doesn't mean there aren't impacts that might be considered significant, and therefore the Planning Commission might determine that it's not appropriate, and they might choose to deny or, or ask for redesigns. So that, that, that can be misunderstood a little bit. We are perfectly aware that there are no significant impacts per SEQA, and that's why the SEQA document is before you tonight, as it is. why the SEQA document is before you tonight, as it is. There are findings required. We have made approval findings for the precise plan, as well as the tree removal permit, we're on one, and the administrative use permit. Those are, we can make those. So the, one thing that would be before you tonight to discuss would be the findings for the CUP, which are listed in the staff report, what findings you need to make, and, and as was the applicant discuss a little bit. I think that's the things that I was going to cover. I don't know if there's any other questions on procedure, we can try to answer those perhaps before you start deliberation.
Commissioners, any other questions regarding procedure? Okay.
There was one other thing I didn't write down. The property owner may wonder why people contact us, but that's a norm. You know, we have an economic development department that goes out and works with different uses and different businesses, and so they will sometimes contact us before they contact the property owner to see if we're amenable to that site, if that works for, if that's something the city would, 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 uh, think is a good idea for that location. So we did have several contacts, and it sounds like he did as well, based on the testimony of, of one of the speakers tonight. So just to cover that. This is always a question of what the property owner wants first before it can ever get to the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you for that, Jeff. I think Commissioner Redholtz, or Holtz, I'm sorry.
We're open to discussion, huh?
That is, yes, correct.
Okay. I'm going to cut to the chase for my chair. I, I appreciate the due diligence that staff has put forward in giving us all this information, and I appreciate the applicant, the patience that they've had over these last couple of years. I am so excited about this restaurant coming to the city. I, I'll tell you, mentioning other restaurants, when Porto was named, everybody was wondering when it's going to open and all that, but I have had many more people asking me about this restaurant, one of the first rumors went out that it was going to open. It's a super-quality restaurant, the quality of food is great, the corporation, you couldn't ask for a better corporation to come into the city. Is it, is it going to generate a little more traffic? Yeah, but that also means it's going to generate more revenue for the city. Are there going to be peak periods? Probably around Christmas time or Black Friday when everybody's out doing it, but I think we can live through that, I know we can live through that. And, you know, it's apparent that 50% of their sales are through drive-through. That's their business, that's their livelihood. And to say about 1% of the time, maybe 26 vehicles are backed up. I know In-N-Out has vehicles backed up and all that, but where you're coming in and going out of this location, it's not on the main street, it's on the side streets, if you will. So I'm going to cut through the chase if I can, and I think I understand that staff has said that they're prepared to do this, but I'm going to make an emotion to approve the requested provides plan, conditional use permit, and administrative use permit at this point in time.
A second.
Is that a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have a first and a second, can we have a roll call?
Can we have comments? I would just ask for just one clarification because the direction for staff to come back with findings, or are we asking that we adopt the findings that were provided to us this evening by the applicant?
Yes, yes, we are. Because I think staff said they already had did some, have done some work on providing the project that we can approve it tonight?
No, I, that was not presented.
Oh, I thought you did.
I will read what the staff report says. One of the options is approve the request to precise plan, conditional use permit, and administrative use permit. If the planning commission determines to approve the proposed development, the item should be continued to December 11th, 2018, to allow staff to prepare resolutions of approval based on the findings made by the planning commission at this meeting.
Okay, so you don't have the resolutions tonight?
We do not.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood you.
So you can, you can take a vote, and if you decide to approve the project based on your deliberation and the articulation of the findings, that's what staff would take back, prepare approval results to be brought back to you on December 11th.
Okay. Fellow commissioners?
Commissioner?
Well, I just want to make some comments. I, you know, there is a motion and a second on the floor, and I don't know, I'm going to make my comments, and then when there's a roll call, everyone will find out how I'm going to vote. I want to just say a couple of things. I kind of take exception, I take strong exception to the comments of Mr. Grivich, that we are a business-hostile community. I think that is a gross overstatement. You know, there is a, this city went through a two-and-a-half-year general plan update, including a new downtown plan, with a consultant, with a lot of staff time, with a lot of commission time, a lot of council time, and at a great cost, at a great cost. We had numerous public meetings, community meetings, public hearings at the planning commission level, city council level, because there was a document produced and adopted by the council that wanted to go in a certain direction in that area. So as our director also explained, that there was some back and forth between the city and the applicant, and it takes time, it takes a lot of time. And I think hostile is, is not the right word to use, really isn't. One thing we hear, that I hear a lot, is gee, another drive-through fast-food restaurant? I hear that a lot. Okay, that's what West Covina is kind of being, becoming known for, is fast-food drive-through restaurants. Okay? If I had my druthers, you know, I would rather replace that Elephant Bar, which was a traditional sit-down eatery, with something comparable to that. When I met with the Chick-fil-A people, I made it very clear that they're not my first choice, they're not my second choice, they really aren't. I would rather have a Stonefire Grill or something on that order in that location. That's a destination restaurant, that's not another fast-food drive-through. To me, to spend a lot of time and a lot of money to create a, a general plan update and a downtown plan that has a focus away from the automobile and a focus towards POD, pedestrian-oriented development, and then to right off the bat approve a project that is completely opposite of that, I don't know that that makes a lot of sense. As I said to them, you know, I mean, who doesn't want Chick-fil-A? You know, Chick-fil-A is, is an out, nobody's questioning whether it's a good company, nobody's questioning that they're going to do a lot of business, they're going to hire a lot of people, you know, it's probably going to be, if it goes in there, very successful. All of that is understood and is a given. But the question I have to ask myself, as our chair alluded to, as a planning commissioner, sitting up here and making a decision on the best use of that land, that's the question I have to ask myself. Is it in line with the direction that this city adopted and wants to move forward with? That's the question I have to ask. I want, no question, I want Chick-fil-A in this city, and I want Chick-fil-A in this city with what they do best, what they drive through, no question about that. The question is, is that corner where they should be? I was out there today at about 12:30, 1 o'clock. I spent about an hour and a half at that bus stop between the bank and the corner, and I was watching traffic. Really exciting day I had, but you know what? Watching cars go by, watching them stack up, watching them line up, watching car after car trying to go, you know, Walnut Creek Parkway, going right towards the freeway, trying to make the left turn onto Lakes, off the freeway, there's a lot of cars there and a lot of stacking up of traffic. And that's with a vacant building sitting there. Granted, we don't want a vacant building sitting there, we want an active restaurant or business, we want something there that's going to activate that corner. So I'm just telling you that, you know, you can look at queue studies, you can look at traffic studies, you can, you know, look at any study you want. That restaurant goes in there, it's going to have a positive impact and a negative impact. It's going to employ 60, 70, 80 people, not full-time people, you know, you can talk about 80, you know, employee positions, but they're not full-time, they're staggered part-time people, you know, maybe making a little better than minimum wage, I don't know. But, you know, you hear the number 80 and you think, wow, but that's 80 people at various, you know, how many hours a week do they work? I don't know, five, 10, 12, maybe, you know, management works 40 hours, maybe more, I don't know. So, you know, there's a positive and there's a negative impact. The negative impact is the impact, and that's the word, it's going to have on traffic. So if this goes through, I don't want to hear nobody complaining about the damn traffic because there's going to be a lot of traffic. So, you know, those are, just to kind of, just wrap it up, we spent a lot of time and money coming up with the plan, and the first thing we're going to do is just throw it, throw it out. So that's where I'm at. I'll see where the motion is, and I'll see how I vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Redholtz. Commissioner Rosati, do you want to add anything else?
Sure. You know, while there's, there's things that I, I can agree with, with the comments that were just shared, I also think that we have to look at, as a community, by being open to opportunity. I know a couple of years ago, we put ourselves in a position that this is the direction we are going to go in with this plan, but things have changed, demand has changed, people's preferences have changed. And to be honest, I would rather see a thriving business go there, while I would love to have another sit-down restaurant, I think that the potential for those restaurants to follow and maybe other locations is great. You know, my fellow commissioner pointed out the fact that there could be a lot of congestion, but on the other side, the positive note, we're so fortunate, the thing that makes West Covina great is that we have the 10 freeway, right? That's why we're best Covina and not just Covina, we have that 10 freeway. And so to capitalize on that, you know, is in our best interest. And, and so I just think it would be a very lost opportunity and unfortunate if we, if we didn't support it. Thank you.
Thank you. To add my comments, Commissioner Redholtz, I believe we were together part of the general plan steering committee, where we looked at all these alternatives, as well as Commissioner Holtz, you were involved as well. So yes, it is, a lot of effort was put into those plans with the idea that we want to transform the city, we want to focus certain type of uses within the downtown area, and here we are, on day one, in essence, asking for, to a certain degree, to deviate from those requirements. I also take a little bit of concern with the use of the word hostility. I believe if you look at the processing of this application, I understand the two-year window is very tight, but I think a few things here, or concessions, have been achieved. One is this holdover, basically holding the project to be consistent with a set of no longer applicable development standards. That alone, I think, is very business-friendly. Most cities would say, you're subject to the newer requirements, and we would be having a whole different discussion this evening if staff did not placeholder that project to allow for this to move forward as proposed this evening. The revision to the plan, Tina, you presented very well, the previous site plan, and then the final plan, and even though that took some time, I can see as a commissioner where the effort, although painful maybe because of the timing, how you can see how you've tried to achieve the goals and objectives of your, of the operator, but at the same time, trying to understand what this commission, among others, of this previous general plan steering group, would like to see in the downtown. So that first plan, I don't like because it's very auto-centric, you have stacking occurring at the street. I don't have an ability, if I wanted to, to catch the bus, no one's talked about me riding my bike there, and I'm a bit hurt about that. So I would only hope you put a bike rack for me when I, if I'm to go there. But these are, are, are topics that were worked out as part of the planning process. It is because of the planning process that maybe I'm comfortable this evening giving you the green light as proposed because you've done one of, you've done a couple of things. One, you've redesigned a project to get your drive-through that maybe is absent out of the mind of the pedestrian that's trying to enjoy somewhat of a pedestrian interaction with the street side, there, by the mall, coming from the mall, or even from the theater. So you create somewhat of a environment for them to come into your business, walk in, ride their bikes as well, too. And all that was achieved through the planning process, and, and I think it's unfair to say it's hostile. The final thing, the SEQA, although not a lot of emphasis, was given to the SEQA document. The infill exemption specifically has some very strict requirements that you have to make findings on in order to qualify for an infill exemption, and one of them, if you're not consistent, I believe, with the general plan, the goals and objectives, it would force you into an initial study, possibly an EIR. But they granted you an infill exemption, obviously because the traffic studies came back a certain way, we're not discussing a variance, and I think that is also showing that we're being business-friendly. So I feel comfortable giving you my recommendation this evening because this is the best attempt between you and the operator and city staff to come to a midpoint, and sometimes it's said, the best planning decisions are the ones where no one is satisfied. And hopefully that's not the case here, but I believe this was the best attempt to try to get a project that's in conformance with the downtown general plan, but maybe also gives you what you need. And so it is because of that, because you worked with staff, that I'm willing to give you my support. And also for the record, staff, thank you, because you do put in a lot of hard work, considering the amount of staff, or lack thereof, that you have for the city of this size. It is hard to synthesize, really, some of these documents until you actually start practicing with them, and this is a good attempt. After seeing the initial plans and then comparing them to the final plans, I'm okay with these modifications, even with the drive-through, because we worked hard at it, and this is the best or as close as we're going to get to, to comply with the downtown general plan. And it is therefore, I am willing to give my support to the application. Thank you.
Sure.
Just want to make, probably tired of hearing from me, but I want to make one more comment. I mean, my comments from a few moments ago are on the record, and that's the way I feel about it. Listening to Mr. Shea from Cal Bay indicate to me that with their control of that property, the likelihood of getting another restaurant or business there is highly unlikely, probably impossible. So my concerns, as I enumerated them a few minutes ago, are valid going forward. But I will tell you this, I don't want to see that corner stay vacant. I don't want to see that corner stay vacant. I was out there today, and there are homeless people behind that fence, there are baby carriages or, you know, car seats behind that, I don't know where these people were, but, you know, it's, it's definitely an issue. We already have a homeless issue in this city. And in the interest of cleaning up that corner, I'm going to support the motion. Okay? But I want to make it clear that we didn't waste our time and our money with a new plan to throw it out every time. I mean, you got in at the 11th and a half hour, otherwise we'd have a different discussion tonight, completely. So I will support the motion.
Does the previous first and second stand, Jeff, or do we need to just go through that?
You have a motion on the floor.
Just to be clear, because it wasn't stated correctly, remember that what I read is to continue to the 11th and direct staff to prepare resolutions for approval, that's the motion.
Your, your motion can be to approve the application and direct staff to bring back the approval resolutions at your next meeting.
With conditions of approval as well, correct?
Yes, and the conditions of approval are before you tonight, and, and, you know, that, well, I'm not sure when that'd be appropriate, we may want to talk to the applicant if they have any concerns with any of those conditions of approval. I think, I don't think they do, because we tried, we worked out one of them with them just in the last two weeks, but what you might want to do is, is make the motion and then, and then maybe ask that question, if that's appropriate.
So we have the, I think, the, the motion, and then second, so I will ask the applicant, are you familiar with the conditions being recommended by staff? Yeah, and you're okay with them?
Hello? Oh, thank you. We, we do have a concern, an exception with the conditions as pre-
We, we do have a concern, an exception, with the conditions as proposed by staff, because those conditions do not have the drive-through element in them.
No, I'm sorry, you may not have noticed, and they're in there. There's, there's three sets of conditions, and if you go to page nine of the staff report, I know this is a very voluminous document. If you go to page nine of that, you'll see the conditional use permit, conditions of approval. I'm sorry, go to the very back, Jennifer. It's easier to start from the back. The very back of the document, you're going to have letters, and then right bef, no, the very back of the document. Now go forward about four or five pages.
Sorry.
And this is double-sided, so I apologize.
Yes, it is. So you're, that's them, those are the conditions, I think, right there, aren't they?
Yes, conditions of approval.
Yeah, so go to page nine of that attachment.
Seven, eight, nine, so conditions of the use permit.
That's the conditions of approval for the drive-through. And then, and then the next page is the conditions of approval for the, the, the outdoor patio. Yeah, we can have discussions with you offline, if you still want to have some time to look, but yeah, all the conditions are there.
As long as that's the set of conditions that would be passed, that are compatible with the site plan that we submitted as the applicant.
These ones, yeah, they, I don't think there's, it doesn't require you to redesign anything. They're just putting in place the operational characteristics.
There's so many versions, I would apologize.
Is it worth maybe pausing for a minute to allow the applicant just to absorb the information?
Well, staff, you can vote to approve the application tonight. Staff will work with the applicant on the resolutions to be brought back to you at your next meeting.
So I'm getting a nod, yes, from the applicant?
Yes, that's absolutely acceptable. Thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you for being flexible. Okay. Any other procedural discussions we need to have, Jeff, or?
No, I think we're, I think we're ready to go, if you want to do a roll call.
Yes, let's do it.
Okay, Commissioner Holtz?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yeah, no, that's right. Commissioner Holtz? Commissioner Redholtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosati?
Aye.
And Chairman Jimenez?
Yes. So this item, then, we will return back on the eleventh for final approval reading, so there's no appeal process at the moment, correct? Jeff, okay. So we will see you folks on the eleventh to read those final resolutions. Thank you, everyone, for coming in. Thank you for your testimony. I'm probably just going to pause for a couple of minutes, just to allow folks to step out, okay? Thanks again. It's getting late in the evening here, so I'm just going to reconvene, if that's okay? Just one item, it's a non-hearing item. First and foremost, thank you, I believe Mr. Roke is the applicant for this one, for your patience. We will quickly bring up your item. As staff is getting set up, I will just introduce the item under non-hearing items, number five. This is a review of requests to extend the hours of operation for administrative use permit fifteen dash oh-nine for two, twenty fifty, South Velinda Avenue, the operation's also known as Rebel Yale Bar and Steakhouse. The applicant is requesting to extend the hours of operation. Sorry, I'm running on fumes here, it appears. Staff, do we have a brief staff report?
I'll do my best. Okay, so on October twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution approving administrative use permit fifteen oh-nine and conditional use permit fifteen oh-five for the operation of a restaurant with live entertainment and on-sale beer, wine, and spirits, again located at twenty fifty South Velinda Avenue, on the northeast corner of Amar Road and Velinda Avenue. The conditions of approval allowed a review by the Planning Commission of the restaurant after six months of operation, to consider extending hours for alcohol sales. The restaurant is currently open eleven AM to twelve PM, Sunday through Wednesday, and from nine AM to two AM, Thursday through Saturday. The applicant originally requested alcohol sales be allowed Sunday through Wednesday from eleven AM to twelve AM, and Thursday through Sunday from nine AM to two AM. On October twenty-seventh, the Planning Commission approved the request with limited hours for alcohol sales, so Monday through Sunday from six AM to twelve AM. The business can be open past them, but alcohol sales must end at midnight. On October fourth, twenty eighteen, the applicant requested a review of the business operation to consider extending alcohol sales to two AM. In order to provide information to the Planning Commission, staff contacted the Police Department and Code Enforcement Division. Police Department indicated it has not received any noise complaints related to the restaurant since it's been in operation. They indicated that there were three calls related to fights over the past two years, but indicated that's a low number compared to other similar establishments. They didn't have any concerns about extending the hours. Code Enforcement Division also indicated that they had no concerns, and they hadn't had any complaints about the operation. There were no citations on file. If Planning Commission wishes to grant the request, a resolution has been prepared to extend the alcohol, the hours for alcohol sales from six AM to two AM, Thursday through Sunday, or Thursday through Saturday. So we have attached an amended administrative use permit resolution for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is gracefully still here.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any questions from staff? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a question. One of the conditions is there a review in six months? Of this?
I believe that's still in there. We can definitely add it if it's not.
Yeah, I believe it is. I'm just, condition W, it looks like, review by the Planning Commission is required after six months.
Yes, yes, that's in there.
So after six months, there'll be a review of this new extended, is that true?
Well, yeah, that's, if it's in there, if you, we don't have to do that, if you, if you want to remove it, that would be all right with us, too.
I don't know, you know, I think at least once, I'd like to review it. That's my position.
Just throwing it out there, maybe bumping it up to a year, so it gives us a bit more of a track record.
Is it possible, just to clarify, what exact hours are being proposed?
So the hours would be, the hours of operation would be eleven AM to twelve PM, Sunday through Wednesday, and nine AM to two AM, Thursday through Saturday.
Twelve PM or?
Eleven AM to twelve AM, I guess, sorry. And then they want to extend their alcohol hours, which currently are cut off at midnight, to two AM, Thursday through Saturday. So Thursday, Friday, Saturday night.
Thank you.
We do have a speaker card from Eric. Do you want to come and talk to us?
I don't understand whether that should be another review. It's been a year and a half, we've had three calls, and I haven't even seen a call there yet.
So for, for, asking for another review is kind of, to me, kind of, doesn't make any sense.
You understand, you saw the staff recommendation, you saw the conditions of approval.
Sorry, it's my mic. Someone's mic is off. Sorry. But you did read the conditions of approval, you saw that. Did you previously object to the conditions?
There was no review in there, though.
Okay.
It's condition W.
I disagree with the review, because it's been a year and a half, I think after six months, and, and like I said.
We had three calls. I'm on it, you know, I'm, I'm on top of it. So for, for us to put that in there, to me, is just, is kind of ridiculous.
You're extending your hours, so we don't know what's going to happen with the extended hours. That's why we're doing it. Two AM.
Okay, I, you know. Okay.
Three calls in a year and a half, gentlemen, three calls.
Sure.
And I can say, we're, we're business people.
Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
I live in the city of Covina, and I grew up here. If I can just say something to Mr. Stein. It's been difficult. He has been a real estate broker for over twenty years. I own an engineering company that works for Edison and Rancho Cucamonga, so we're business people. But eighteen months ago, we sat in front of this council, and we tried to explain to you that we're not the same people that we were. And I hope that our track record shows that. I think it does show that today. So what he's bothered about is the fact that you're only letting us Thursday, Friday, and Saturday open to two AM. And we would like to be open every day to two AM. So that's what we're asking the council to do. And I appreciate the planning department, like, being okay on our side, and the police department being on our side, and saying that it's been a lot better since the beginning. And I think that's where the frustration is. As a business owner, Eric Roke is a little frustrated, if you don't know.
Okay. Yeah, and I think you introduced some information, I'm not sure that we were pervy to at the moment, which may actually impact the way I vote. So are we saying that the, Mr. Roke is no longer available to answer our questions, or?
Ken, I think you. No, I can answer the questions. I'm a manager there, and I can, I can, I can speak for him, and I can answer the questions.
Okay. Yeah, I just need to make sure we understand, because, one, I, I think, I, I was under the impression that there were, there were concerns regarding the six-month review versus the one-year review. But I may be misunderstanding, that now it's an hours of operation concern. Okay.
We haven't stood in front of this council for eighteen months, for a year and a half, because we decided to go with what the planning department asked us to go, and what you guys decided. We've done our part. The, the city is doing a great job. We have not gotten a lot of calls. All we're asking is, can we stay open every day till two AM? That's what I think.
That's not what's in front of us, is it?
Maybe I can clarify.
Yeah, please.
So the original approval, they had originally requested to be open until two AM on the weekends. When it was approved by Planning Commission originally, they, it's open till two AM, no alcohol sales after midnight, you know, every day. Their original request was alcohol sales after midnight on the weekends. So when they came back to reconsider, it was not made clear to us that that request was for all the days. It was to reconsider based on what was in the planning department, or what was in the staff report originally, which was that we would consider on the weekends until two AM. So that is where we came with the request.
Okay. All right. Commission?
Well, so what's in front of us tonight is Thursday, Friday, Saturday, correct?
That's what we're recommending. I mean, the Planning Commission can do whatever you want. I also want to be clear on what the review is, because most of the time, when we do review, we don't even include the applicant. We just bring information to the Planning Commission, and they don't even know about it. So I don't know, I'm not sure what they think the review is, but it's usually a very, if there's no issues, we bring it to the commission, they look at it, they.
It's just a report.
It's just a report, a receive and file, and, and we're done. If there's big issues, then obviously, they're going to know about it, and they're going to know that they, they got some problems they've got to address anyway. So, and in my experience here, I don't, well, besides one use nearby, we didn't, we have never had any problems with those six-month or one-year reviews, that we, we give you a report from the police department, and that, that's, that's it. So I just want to be clear, I don't think there.
But if they didn't change their hours, and there was a six-month review, then everything would be all right. But now they're asking for extended hours.
Yes, no. I'm just clarifying what the six-month review is. Not, not whether they should do it, that's up to you.
But if we did a six-month review, and they didn't ask for extended hours or anything, and there was no problem, there wouldn't be any more extensions of the review. Now they're asking for longer hours, or, you know, hours, more hours, so that's why we're saying we want to review it again one more time.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. So let's have a commission discussion, or do we have a motion? Commissioner Rosati? You want to chairman?
Yeah, I, I'm just a little concerned with the outbursts, to be honest. This commission has the right and the authority to make sure that we're making decisions for this community, and I think where you're located, it's a more residential area, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. And so, you know, that's within its, within our right to make the proper decisions for the, the community. And, and so, to, to be honest, when you're, you're in business, you're supposed to provide the most service, and, and that outburst, you know, kind of made me change my mind, unfortunately, so.
So the recommendation this evening is for approval, to modify the hours of operation.
From Thursday through Saturday, from midnight to two AM.
Right, okay.
And I think their verbal request was every night till two AM, so Monday through Sunday.
Quite honestly, I feel a bit confused, just considering the rapid exchange of information, and then some of the concerns being voiced. I, I, I want to help the applicant, and try to get them toward they, they need to be at, but I think part of me is a bit hesitant at the moment, because of just the, the sequencing of information, and I'm not sure that I have the best available or understanding at this moment, to make that recommendation.
One option, if, if, if the Planning Commission has trouble, making determination, maybe we can get a letter from them requesting what they want, and then we'll present it, and bring, just bring this back at the next meeting.
I, I mean.
It's not a public hearing item, so.
Understood, understood. And I think, for me, depending on my, stay with this commission, obviously, that, that's going to be of consideration. I do want to help the applicant. Obviously, I'm not happy with the way it, it went down, but the lack of information or misunderstanding between the city and the applicant, I think it's only fair that probably we hashed this out before an action is taken. That's the, the recommendation, just coming from this chair. Commissioner?
Well, I'll tell you what, you know, we have, we have an action item in front of us, that I looked at, and I considered, and what's in front of me is a proposal to go till two AM, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. That's what's in front of me. I don't know, or really care what he says up there. I'm concerned about what is here officially in front of me. And I'm prepared to make a motion to deny that.
Fair enough.
Denying Thursday, Friday, and Saturday?
So with that, it'll stay just till midnight?
Yeah.
I second.
You probably shouldn't make a motion, instead of being prepared to make a motion. I think you said you were prepared.
Oh, okay, well, I'm prepared to make the motion that Commissioner Rosati just seconded.
So if there, there's a motion on the floor, unless there's a substitute motion, then you should take a vote on that motion.
I mean, I'm okay voting at the moment.
With the motion on, on the floor. I made a recommendation, but.
So the, the motion on the floor is to deny the request, and retain the current hours as is.
That would allow them, though, to still submit the written? They could still put it before us?
Are they allowed to come back?
There may be a waiting period before they're allowed to come back. We'd have to check the code.
Can we consider this without prejudice, to allow them the quick ability to come back if they want to?
I would suggest.
No.
I, I would suggest, if someone wants to make a motion to continue it, that would be a substitute motion to be voted on.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that they can stay open till two AM on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Is that what it is, Thursday, Friday, Saturday? That's my motion.
That's a substitute motion.
Okay, I will try that. Okay, I will second.
Okay, so now we're roll call on the substitute motion to remain open till two AM, Thursday through Saturday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, this is just, I'm sorry, this, that's, that's a good point. This is just for alcohol sales. When they're open, when a restaurant's open, it's not.
No, this is for alcohol, till two AM, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Okay, so I'm going to go.
That's my motion.
I'm going to go through the roll call. Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Redholtz?
No.
Commissioner Rosati?
No.
And Chairman Jimenez?
Yes.
So that's two-two.
Two-two, motion fails.
Fair enough.
So then the original motion is now on the floor.
So the original motion is to deny the request, and keep, retain the hours as existing? And I'll go through the roll call on that, at the chairman's pleasure.
We're, this is for denying.
Basically denying the request. Commissioner Holtz?
No.
Commissioner Redholtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosati?
Aye.
Chairman Jimenez?
No.
Motion fails.
So as the director, who has no power here, but I, my recommendation would be to continue this, and let us go through the process. We may end up with five people at the next meeting, we may end up with a different set of people, but I think that probably is, in fairness to the applicant, and in greater transparency, and to not pervade up, create a hostile business environment.
Thank you for acknowledging that, Jeff. I can make that motion to continue.
I'll second.
All right. So roll call.
All right, so roll call. Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Redholtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosati?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes, aye.
So this is not a hearing item. Hopefully, we'll bring it back on the 11th, we'll work with the applicant to get us a document that explains what they want, and we'll move forward at that point.
I would just encourage the applicant, as he walks out, if he could, please stay in communication with staff and, and please just provide the information. We would really appreciate it.
I didn't have the.
Yeah, Mr. Roca, we can't, we can't capture, yeah. But, but please work with staff, please, that's all we ask. Again, thank you. It was an evening of a lot of emotions, obviously, the topics that were discussed. And again, we apologize to all those folks, both here at, that were or are here in the audience and then back home. So that concludes our items, both hearing and non-hearing. I will move on, on our agenda to continuation of oral communication. Once again, for folks that are here wishing to maybe speak on items not agendized, I see a few folks, a few pair of eyes in the audience, okay. No, no additional information under oral communication. Commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items.
I'll go. Let's see. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been a pleasure serving with you these last few years, and you're moving on and to a lofty position in another city, and lofty, it's very lofty. And, you know, it's been a pleasure working with you. You know, I gleaned a lot of knowledge just by sitting with you, with your planning experience and knowledge, and, and I appreciate that. And it's been a pleasure, and I wish you the best of luck as you go forward in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Holtz.
I hope so.
And I also want to, you know, congratulate our former colleague on the commission, Dario Castellanos, who was elected, who made the giant leap from this commission to the city council, which ironically meets right here in the same spot, but, you know, a little different responsibilities at that level. And he won in District Four, which is my district. So, you know, looking forward to good things from him. And thank you, Commissioner Rosati, for being here. Your input was good and well-received, and I appreciate that. Nothing for you, Commissioner Holtz, sorry about that.
Yeah, you still have a lot, a few, a few more meetings to take part in. Okay, thank you for that, Commissioner Redholtz. Yeah, I think it's, well, obviously, for a couple reasons, I need to sunset my time here with the Planning Commission. It's been an honor, a privilege, a pleasure, really, to serve both on the, here with the folks of the community, the, the public, as well as you, all the commissioners. I know we only have one meeting, but I'm hope, I hope we got a lot from each other during this time, and a privilege and honor, something that I will, I will always cherish as I, as I step down, and then hopefully build somewhat of a legacy here in this community. I would hate to say goodbye, but maybe till next time, maybe when the opportunity presents itself again, I would like to come back in some capacity and help out as best I can in the community. Obviously, this is one way to be out here. I've, I've always said this, it's very easy to complain and talk about issues, but when you decide to sit up here, you can actually be that person, you can, your voice can be, could carry weight versus just coming constantly and voicing objection or, or talking down the staff from time to time because of their hostility or implied hostility. But again, I really do thank you, Jeff, Veronica, you know, High Court Legal Counsel, which you guys do for the size of this city. It's quite amazing, short of amazing, if anything. But thank you, everyone, and I wish you all the best. I won't say goodbye, but till next time. Okay.
Well, it was a good first meeting, so thank you. I appreciate it. You know, you made a comment to me in passing about, you know, jumping into this, and, you know, it's, it's kind of surreal. I started sitting in this council chamber, I used to do my homework when I was in elementary through middle school until I could stay home by myself. Never thought that I would actually be sitting up here, but I'm very honored for the opportunity and, and the trust that was bestowed upon me to do the best that I could. So thank you for allowing me to sit up here with you guys today.
I'd like to say something, but I won't. I just got off a plane, and I got to catch another plane tomorrow morning at 7:00 o'clock. So, yeah, I wish I was the pilot.
Good, good old Don just jet-setting. You're off to Bora Bora this time, or is it Fiji? The good old windy city. Planning Directors' Report.
Well, I for one am glad that Don isn't the pilot tomorrow, so, living near Ontario Airport, I'm not sure where he's flying out. But I do want to thank Jose, we, I think we met Jose basically during the general plan update, so that was, it was a, it's been a very good, good time getting to know you and, and working with you on the Planning Commission, so we wish you the best. I'm sure we'll continue to see you in the circles around the valley and around town, and welcome Ashley and perhaps a new member in the near future, or new members in the near future. We, just on the Planning Commission report, we do have the forthcoming items. We have three hearing items, I think that's what we ended up with, three hearing items for the 11th. We got the ones that were added, so we might have as many as five.